Test 1, 2, 1, 2. Test 1, 2, 1, 2.
...
Okay. And Steve, is Steve ready? Donna Liz, you ready?
Yes.
Okay. Yep. Thank you. Town manager Zudma, ready to begin?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. I call this February 13th meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching recording of this meeting. On February 20th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.morrisvillnc.gov/government. This time, I'd like to recognize our sergeant in arms, Officer Thompson. Joined the Morrisville Police Department in 2019 as a full-time police officer, where she was a member of the patrol division for three years. She has since changed career fields, but still serves the town of Morrisville as one of our reserve officers. Thank you very much for being with us here tonight. At this time, Councilmember Rao will deliver tonight's invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening's invocation is in honor of Black History Month. Please bow our heads in prayer. In the spirit of unity and celebration, we gather today to honor and reflect upon the rich tapestry of Black history. Let us open our hearts and minds to the stories and achievements of those who have shaped our world, and grant us the strength to confront the challenges that lie ahead and the compassion to lift one another up. Let this month be a reminder of the importance of unity and solidarity as we work towards a society where everyone is seen, heard, and valued. May we draw inspiration from the resilient, brilliant, and courageous leaders, thinkers, artists, and activists who have paved the way for justice, equality, and freedom. And may ignorance be dispelled, and may empathy blossom in its place always. We reflect on the countless contributions of Black Americans who have played a pivotal role in shaping the fabric of our society, the trailblazers, the visionaries, the leaders, and the everyday heroes who have left a mark on our history. This evening, we also remember the historic shallow community of Morrisville and are grateful for their remarkable contributions to our town and for their historic place in American Black history. Let us be ever mindful of the ongoing journey towards a world where every individual, regardless of race or background, is afforded the dignity and respect they deserve. Let our celebration of Black history be a call to action, a commitment from all of us to amplify Black voices and be dedicated to building a more just and inclusive future for all. In the name of unity, progress, and the celebration of diversity, let us always remember that Black history is an integral part of the history of our nation and the human story, a story we all share and contribute to every day. We pray for all these things in a great meeting this evening. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. If you are able, please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, town council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Would any council member like to share anything at this time? Okay. I entertain a motion to adopt this evening's agenda.
I move that we adopt this evening's agenda.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Rao and a second by Mayor Pretam Garamella. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that carries unanimously, seven zero. There are three items on this evening's consent agenda. A resolution dissolving the Morrisville Public Education Advisory Committee, a resolution dissolving the Performance Measures Advisory Committee, and a resolution authorizing audit contract renewal. Would any council member like to pull any of those for discussion before we adopt? I entertain a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Rao and was that you on the second, Liz?
Yes.
And Councilmember Johnson on the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that carries unanimously as well. We are at presentations. We have one presentation tonight, a presentation recognizing service of the Morrisville Public Education Advisory Committee, or MPAC, and Performance Measures Advisory Committee, PMAC, members. I'd like to recognize Bianca McCain. Or actually, no, I'll just ask them to come up front to receive their plaques. Is that right? No, that was me.
Okay.
That was my mistake. Here we go. So is Shranth Rai here this evening? If you'd like to approach, please. I'd like to thank you for your service. So we'll be presenting this in appreciation for your community's support and participation on the Morrisville Public Education Advisory Committee. Thank you for your time and dedication.
Thank you, everyone.
You bet. Excellent. Thank you. You bet. Thank you, sir. Looking for Sarah Fuller. There, here you are. Come on up, Sarah. Sarah also served on the Morrisville Public Education Advisory Committee, and I believe we served on the PSCAC a while ago. Great to see you again. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ram Padell. Not here this evening? Okay. And I don't see Manoj Pandya as well. Okay. Was there anyone else from any of those committees who are here this evening? Okay. Well, I'd just like to say thank you very much for everyone's service on those committees. They served a great purpose for the town, and now we're just moving on from there. Would any of their council members like to say anything about those committees? Yeah, Councilmember Rao.
Sorry, yeah. Well, I just want to thank the residents for serving on this committee and look forward to... I just want to thank you for being so engaged with the town. And for those of you listening on the livestream tonight or across the town, just grateful for any residents that step up and serve our community. And so we encourage you to apply to other committees and continue to express your concerns and ideas, show your ideas of how we continue to do great things in Morrisville. So, thank you so much.
Okay. Well said. Thank you, sir. Moving on to public address at this time, interim town clerk Parker Evans will now present any public comments received.
We have not received any public comments.
Okay. Was anyone signed up for in person this evening? Okay. Is there anyone here in the room who would like to speak to this body for up to three minutes on any subject of your choosing? Okay. Thank you very much. Action items is number 10. There are three action items on this evening's agenda. A resolution announcing intent to permanently close a portion of Skoggins Avenue facilitated by Josh Michael, a proposed master sign plan for the Spark development located at 4877 McCrimmon Parkway facilitated by Elliot Ward, and a capital project ordinance amendment and resolution amending the town center predevelopment agreement facilitated by manager Zudma. At this time, we'll start off with Josh Michael.
Good evening, Town Council. So this is an adoption of resolution announcing intent to close a portion of Skoggins Avenue. So the request is part of the town center project. The town will need to permanently close the westernmost 150-foot portion of Skoggins Avenue. Under General Statute 168-299, a municipality, excuse me, a municipality may permanently close a street or public alley within the municipal limits or extraterritorial jurisdiction. In terms of the process, the council must first adopt a resolution declaring its intent to close, excuse me, the public way and calling a public hearing on the proposed closing. And so the notice requires the following. So first, publication of the resolution once a week for four successive weeks prior to the hearing, and that will be with the news and observer, registered or certified mail notice to all owners of property adjoining the public way, and posted notice of the proposed closing in at least two places along the public way. So for the request and process, any person may speak at the public hearing concerning whether closing the street or alley is detrimental to the public interest. Council may adopt an order of closing the street or alley if council is satisfied that closing the street or alley is not contrary to the public interest and that no individual owning property in the vicinity of the street or alley in this subdivision... Thank you. ...in which it is located would thereby be deprived of reasonable means of ingress or egress of the property. The order must then be recorded with the register of deeds. After the order is recorded, the right-of-way then reverts to the adjoining property owners, with each taking property from the center lines to their respective boundary. In this case, since the town owns both sides of the right-of-way, the property would go to the town. And this is a picture, an aerial of the Skoggins Avenue abandonment. And so this evening, staff recommends approval of the resolution noticing intent to permanently close a portion of Skoggins Avenue. Staff will then execute all General Statute 168-299 mandated noticing, and a public hearing on the closure would be held on March 12th, 2024. Council will have the option to act on the right-of-way closure at that time. This will allow the town center project to proceed as planned. And your action item this evening is the one under February 13th. So at this time, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions? Councilmember Abadi, please.
Would you mind just going back to the picture?
Absolutely.
To show exactly what this would look like?
Yep. And just to point out, these properties that are joining the abandoned portion of the street are all town-owned.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. Then if you want to bring up the words that we need to say, I entertain a motion. Is that just it?
Yep. That's just it.
I would like to do a motion on Skoggins Avenue.
That sounds appropriate. Councilmember Skoggins Johnson, please, go ahead.
Very good. There, I turned it on. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-2-0A of the Morrisville Town Council announcing its intent to permanently close a portion of Skoggins Avenue.
I have a motion by Councilmember Skoggins Johnson and a second by Councilmember Fender. Any discussion on that motion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, seven zero. So I'm glad that that will be reverting to the town.
And permanently.
Permanently.
Thank you.
Okay. Excellent.
Great.
Moving on to item 10B. We'll have Elliot Ward facilitate the next item.
Thank you, Mayor Colley. Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Down to... There you go.
Skipping right to the good part.
As a reminder, we did have a briefing and public hearing on this item at the previous meeting. There are no additional updates at this time, but I am here to answer any extra questions if you have any. Thank you.
Councilmember Abadi, did you have a question?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Okay. If there are no questions or updates, I entertain the motion as shown on the screen. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Johnson.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-453-0 of the Morrisville Town Council approving a master sign plan for the Spark development located at 4877 McCrimmon Parkway,
I have a motion by Councilmember Johnson, a second by Councilmember Fender. Any discussion on that motion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that also carries unanimously. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
The next item will be facilitated by our town manager, Brandon Zudma.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Coming back to you tonight in regards to the amendment to the town center predevelopment agreement, we briefed this for you back on January 23rd. As a reminder, this is to fund the remainder of the predevelopment work up until construction would start. Back in May of '23, you signed the initial predevelopment agreement with the understanding that we would have a development agreement in place by January of this year. We did not due to some delays in working through design work, so we're asking instead to just extend that predevelopment agreement and fully fund all of that work in this agreement, and then we'll go straight to into a development agreement once we have a preconstruction estimate likely in April or May of this year. So no new information, happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for the town manager? Okay. Well, we're scheduled to vote on this tonight, so would anyone like to make that motion? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Johnson.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-7-0 of the Morrisville Town Council approving an amendment to the predevelopment agreement with Sing Development LLC for the town center project.
I have a motion from Councilmember Johnson, a second by Mayor Pretam Garamella. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously. We want to go ahead and approve this next as well. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Johnson again. That's okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve the capital...
Project.
Project ordinance amendment, 2024-7-0, authorizing additional funding in the amount of $702,000.
I have a motion from Councilmember Johnson, a second from Mayor Pretam Garamella. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And let's keep it moving. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we are running well ahead of schedule, so we're going to just keep on going if that's everyone's wish. There is one new item on this evening's agenda, a resolution adopting the Language Access Plan. This is very exciting. This item will be facilitated by Giselle Rodriguez, deputy town manager. Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. Back in November 28th, I came before you to give you an overview of our experience in the Language Access Collaborative and share an overview of the steps that we were taking to develop a Language Access Plan. Tonight, I am before you to formally present the plan to you to request... Tonight, I am before you to formally present the plan to you, to request adoption of the plan, and to also request the adoption of a policy that memorializes the step that we will take to increase language access in our community, which becomes the commitment that we are making to the community. And I cannot go any further without giving a shout out to our community partner, Hindi Vikas Mandal. They have been amazing to work with. The partnership with them and their collaboration, their commitment to the whole process has added a lot of value to this process. It has given us the opportunity to see things from a whole different lens, and that just has made the plan so much more complete with their input incorporated into this plan. So I definitely have to, while they are not here tonight, I do want to publicly give them a shout out again because they have been amazing to work with. When we met back in November the 28th, I shared the same slide, and I do have some clarification to provide. So Morrisville is unique in many different ways, and our growth has been impressive and our demographics are quite unique, as you can see especially in the pie chart. And I want to drive your attention to that pie chart. Here is where I want to provide clarification on information that was presented to you on November the 28th, and information that we have used in several locations. So we have mentioned in multiple locations that 46% of our population is Asian Indian. Through more in-depth research through the census data and the information that we have available to us, that number is 46% Asian. The category is Asian as a whole. 36% of our population is Asian Indian, being the largest group of the Asian category. So I wanted to provide that clarification and also highlight that this number, 36%, is an increase. In 2010, we only had 20%, and we are now at 36% of Asian Indian from our total population. This is also based on numbers from 2020 because our census is dated 2020. We do have some population estimates, but the breakdown to all of those categories is not available to us yet. So based on the information we have available to us, this is the makeup of our community as it sits from the last census. In this slide, we can clearly see that there's huge diversity represented, especially on this pie chart. And this is one of the drivers, one of the key drivers to our commitment to language access goals. Here we see how important it is for us to be able to identify those goals that will allow us to connect with our community even better. So as we ask the question, so why the Morrisville needs a language access plan, kind of why now? Well, I could quickly say, well, we are doing this because it's a federal mandate and the plan will allow us to be in compliance with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. But I can't leave it there because this is much more than that. It's much more than just being in compliance with the federal mandate. Yes, we want to be in compliance with the federal mandate, but this has a huge significance to our community. We want to have a plan that allows us to connect even better, that allows us to expand effective engagement with all, everyone who lives, work, play, and learn in our community. Not only those that live here, but even those that come through Morrisville, that come here to have fun and come here to work as well. So that connects hand in hand with our motto, live connected, live well, making those connections to all of those that are present in our community. So why do we need a language access? It's not just because of a federal mandate, it's because we really care and we really want to connect with those that are here. I showed this slide back in November 28, and there is so much happiness in this slide that I keep reusing it because for the last several years, the town has been very active to show in many ways how we embrace our cultural diversity. Our programming has seen several changes to simplify that fact, bringing many smiles to individuals from different cultural backgrounds. And as we continue our journey to embrace diversity in our community, language access is essential to having a far greater reach. We do have individuals in our community that are not even coming in for services, and we certainly do not want individuals to refrain from coming in because they're not able to receive services in the language that they speak. We want to make sure that we are building those bridges to connect with them. As I say in our work of the language access plan, we don't believe that language barriers exist because we have different abilities in language. We believe that we are in the perfect position to make language bridges that allows us to connect with those that are here. So let me add, just refresh your mind on some of the data that I shared with you before. 41% of our population speak languages other than English. When we look at some of the numbers from other communities, this number is pretty high. To have 41% of our population that speak languages other than English, this is pretty high. Other communities, their percentages may be in a single digit, while we have nearly half of our population that speak other languages. 9% of those, or 9% of our population in total, speak English less than very well. And this is where it becomes very important to us because this is a portion of our population where we really need to make sure that we are connecting with them in the language that they prefer. We also trace back to be able to identify what languages do we really need to focus on. We had to dive into the data and look at that foreign-born population. Where are they really coming from? And without giving you all of the details, we traced it back that the higher portion of that foreign-born population, 63%, was really coming from India, which is what takes us to why did we choose Hindi as a primary language? We also did a survey with our department to understand what level of interactions were they really having with individuals in our community? What languages were they seeing the most and what were those interactions associated with? Specifically, what programming was really their interest? We heard that 23% of our departments encounter Hindi often to very frequently, and other languages that were encountered were Chinese, Spanish, and Vietnamese. And those primarily came to light through the work of the special, the small business program, where we realized the census only focuses on those who live here, but the small business program gave us the opportunity to hear from those that are doing business here, that have small businesses here, and it's important for us to be able to connect with them. And we were able to learn that Chinese and Vietnamese was very present in that community. As we continue to do evaluation in our departments, we also realize there are many that come here for the construction business that speak Spanish, and there is an opportunity for us to also connect with that portion of the population, which is the reason why those languages are included on our languages of focus. Some of the key services that we noticed that individuals that speak English less than very well were seeking were solid waste collection with questions of when is my trash picked up, my trash can is broken, how do I get service, special events, questions with special events, being able to learn more about them, public safety with the interactions that fire and police may have in the community, and any of the programs associated with the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Department. As I mentioned, the languages of focus that we have selected are Hindi, which is population-based, Chinese, Finnish, and Vietnamese that are business-based or individuals that are coming here that either own a business or are coming here for work. And when we say, I want to clarify, when I say strategic languages, that doesn't mean those are the only languages that we will include in our documents, that we will focus for translation, or that we will focus for interpretation. That means that those will be the ones that will have a higher priority when it comes to translating vital documents, and I explain what that is in a second. However, we will enter into contract with providers that will be able to provide interpretation to us or to individuals in our community in the language that they prefer. There is a very long list of those languages, and they will be able to receive the information in the language that they select. To explain what vital documents is, vital documents is any document that is critical for an individual to be able to learn and participate in any service and program in our community. If there is, if they, if there is the possibility that they can miss out on an opportunity because it's not on their language, we consider that a vital document, like an essential document, important enough that we need to translate them to. The plan, as in the appendix, does include guidance on how we select what languages, what documents to be translated to. And we will utilize that as we evaluate all of the documents that we have through the different departments to establish a priority. Which ones do we feel are more important to start with and which ones do we go down to? So that guidance has been provided to us through the Language Access Collaborative, and we are grateful for that, that we have those tools that would allow us to identify and prioritize the documents that we really need to focus on. So part of, part of this item is not only adopting the plan, but also the resolution establishes a policy. Now, the establishment of the policy is the portion that connects with the federal mandate. The federal mandate requires us to provide timely, meaningful access that is free of charge and that we are taking reasonable steps to identify and assess the need for language assistance. There is also important for us to take reasonable efforts to provide language assistance services by qualified individual. And that has become very important through our work of the Language Access Collaborative because often we see individuals coming in with children to assist them in the translation process or in the interpretation process. And oftentimes, it may put them at a disadvantage, whether it is because technical terms are not correctly translated, or because there may be, depending on the situation, if it's a situation that involves trauma, it puts the children in a difficult situation of having to translate through a difficult situation. So it allows us to be able to provide individuals that are able to provide information in technical terms that is accurate and that removes the possibility of placing friends or family members or children in that difficult charge. We also want to establish a policy, the policy will establish that staff will be trained to inform members of the public that language assistance services are available, and that becomes very important because as we may start having interactions with an individual, if we realize they may be struggling to get their information across, gives us the ability to say, can we serve you in a different language? And being able to make that connection where we can put them at ease and continue to provide the service without any level of hesitation, but that they can feel that they can also take part and receive the information regardless of what language they speak. Being able to train staff to do that in a respectful manner so that they can express that to the individual that's seeking the services. Taking reasonable efforts to translate vital documents, I just, I just talked about the vital documents, and making sure that we take any complaints seriously. If we receive any complaints, we will take the steps to investigate it and to get it documented and to take any steps that are necessary for us to correct it. As we carry out this policy, some of the key procedures in the plan goes a little bit more in detail into the procedures that will be important. But some of those procedures is making sure that we are taking in consideration the different levels of proficiency in reading and speaking. This is different, this is very important and something that we learn, and I say we, I would say Sarah was instrumental in providing this information to us, so shout out to Sarah Ellis, who led with the small business, led the small business program. And she was able to have those connections with the community, and she was very insightful to inform these procedures to be very beneficial. And this is something that was experienced through the work of the small business program and making sure that we are evaluating our tools to consider different levels of proficiency. Cultural competency is also very important on how information is communicated and making sure there is that awareness among staff and considering that cultural competency component as we are trying to communicate with others. One other thing that you will also see as part of our action items is utilizing self-identification or language identification cards. It is essentially a card that has a lot of languages on it and has a statement translated into many different languages, and it allows the individuals who is seeking the services to point to the language that they choose and that connect staff, help staff connect with an interpreter that can provide the services in that particular languages. We will need to establish a contract with a service provider to be able to do that, and that is one of the actions that is also included in our action plan. But being able to equip staff with those self-identification cards will provide that tool for them to quickly and effectively identify the language need. One other thing that we will take steps to is to provide intentional and proactive training to staff to maintain the awareness and to ensure compliance with the plan. And departments will keep track of any requests for language access because it helps us not only identify if our, if our plan needs to be updated, if not, something needs to be added, but it also helps us identify and justify the need and validate any additional budget that may be necessary for the continuous implementation of the plan. This is just a representation of the action plan included, the action plan included within the plan, and this is just an abbreviated version of the goals that will be included. Essentially, what we did is we divided the action plan in five different categories, with each category having a particular goal associated with each of those. So I'm gonna move on to the next slide because this next slide then dives into the objectives that we will pursue through the implementation. So within the welcoming and partnership category, we need to designate language access coordinator in language access liaisons within any of the department. And on that second bullet within that category is being able to install some welcoming signage at town facility. So even before an individual comes in through our doors, it is very evident to them that language assistance is provided to them free of charge and how they can access that. So as soon as, even before they open our doors, they already are aware of that. As we look into our marketing and outreach category, we also would like to make sure that we are providing opportunities when we hold different town hall meetings, that we provide opportunities for interpretation to be provided at those meetings as well so that individuals are not missing out on participating because the information is not in a language that they best prefer. As we have evaluated, how can we make this accessible? How can we increase access to the program? We have been working with the Morrisville Community Library to make the plan available as part of their, within the library where anyone can pull up the plan and read through the plan and identify what's in there. But it also has allowed us to have more connection into our efforts in the language access and the efforts that the library themselves are taking in language access. They are currently increasing their different collections in other languages. They have a, they recently added a collection in Hindi that has become very popular and is actually helping them justify additional collections that may need to be added in the future. And it's, it's been very beneficial to be able And it's, it's been very beneficial to be able to, to have those collections provided at the local library. In order to sustain, program access is important, that annual budget is designated for this. Through the work of the Language Access Collaborative, we have been granted a $25,000 grant that gets the work started. But $25,000 won't carry us for too long, especially when we start engaging into, with a consultant that will provide interpretation services. It gets expensive and the $25,000 will draw down very quickly. So we definitely need to identify a sustainable budget that will continue to make this implementation possible. As I continue around that circle, I just mentioned the vital documents and vital documents and providing translation to those is part of our service accessibility. We also want to increase access to our website by providing the opportunity to have translation within our website as well. And as we move into staff training and tools, I just mentioned the language identification cards, but we also want to make sure that our staff is not only aware of cultural components that can influence the communication, but that they can also learn key phrases in other languages that can help put an individual that may be in a difficult situation at ease as early as the interaction begins. All of those that are identified in orange are some of the objectives that we plan to complete in conjunction with our community partner, Hindi Vikas Mandal. This is another testament that it's impossible to do this work with our community partners, and in this case, Hindi Vikas Mandal will be instrumental for our success. So as our next step tonight, I'm giving you this brief. The plan and the resolution is attached. The plan may be a little lengthy, but I think it's a good read, so I encourage you to, to go through it. The idea is that I'll be back on February the 27th, and hopefully we can adopt it that night. As I mentioned, we are working with the library to include the plan in the, in their repository, and it will also be provided in town hall and available for anyone that would like to look at the plan. I emphasize again the importance of allocating sustainable funding to continue, to, to keep the program alive, to continue to expand as we continue to find different opportunities. The plan is a plan, right? So without actions taking place and implementation, it only sits on a shelf. So we certainly do, that's one of our next steps, is just put it into action, starting, getting the work into it. Identifying coordinator and liaisons within the departments will be very important to make sure that we are implementing a plan that is meaningful to each of the departments that provide services to our community. As we have established a very strong partnership with Hindi Vikas Mandal as our community partner, we recognize that we do have other community partners and we have other languages present in our community, and that creates an opportunity for us to identify other community partners that can help us be successful in other areas as well. So that is definitely an area of opportunity for us that we can continue to explore connecting with others. A bonus I'll leave you with tonight is that February the 21st is International Mother Language Day, and while the plan will not be adopted by then, we will take steps to share with the community the work that we have been doing on the language access, especially on that day, so that they are aware of what we have going on and what's coming. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Wonderful. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Did we go back to slide 12 or to the next steps?
This one?
Yeah. I was curious if there are other municipalities part of this program that are also looking at Hindi, or are we the only community? I figured that, but, but Spanish is another language that would be shared with probably a lot of other municipalities. Is there any interest from other municipalities about sharing translation services on some common terminology or common references? Because some park signs, you know, certain signs are very common among towns. Did you have discussions about common interests at all in the program?
So the Language Access Collaborative has afforded nine teams the ability of being part of it. We are the only one with Hindi as a focus. All other eight have Spanish as a focus. We do have teams that have identified other strategic languages in addition to Spanish. To, as I remember correctly, no others have chosen Hindi, but there are others that also have Chinese, for example, or that may have Vietnamese as an example as well. One of the, the benefits of being part of the collaborative is now it makes you part of this group that, I mean, we have been together for a year. So it has allowed us to be able to get resources, sample documents, sample contracts. We just received some sample self-identification cards that give us idea of how others are approaching the same thing. And it, by being part of all of those connections, now does give us the ability of being able to say, hey, how are you doing this? So being able to share common languages or share translations could be beneficial. We could have access to that, definitely. We also need to evaluate and confirm those translations as well.
Exactly. And I was also wondering if you're thinking about the translation strategy so that you could reuse content, like think about, you know, how do you design your forms or different things in a way that it can be repurposed so it's not so specialized? There's a lot of strategies with reusable content, but again, it's all about context and could be interpreted the wrong way. If you take a few words here and there, it changes the whole meaning. But I really like this initiative, and I look forward to hearing more about it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rao, please.
Just a quick question, I, you know, as we, first of all, I just want to say that this is an absolutely amazing program that all of you have worked on, and I just had never in my life ever imagined that I would see a government be so responsive to the needs of the community. So kudos to you and the staff and the partners that made this happen because I think it's really unbelievable. I know Councilmember, I mean Mayor Pretem Garamella probably has a lot of experience in this because of his career, but I was just curious about the potential of AI being used to accelerate this because I know that our staff and other staffs are starting to look at generative AI in terms of how we could quickly search for documents, but would there be a way of continuing as we grow this program to integrate it with our technology initiatives so that, you know, there could be automation and translation? I've even heard Town Manager Zuduma mention this at the Smart Cities Conference when I, you were asked the question about AI and smart cities, and you even, you even mentioned that. So just curious if you could give us some insight on that.
Thank you for that. So one of the greatest things about this program is, I would say that I think we have almost all departments excited about this effort. So we have been keeping all of our departments aware of our progress, the importance of it, and how do they play a role in it. And not only has the community, Communications Department being part of this effort, but IT is also part of this. They are also working along, IT and Communications are working to identify opportunities that we may have on the technology arena to be able to utilize AI technology, being able to utilize some chatbots on different ways that could allow us to increase access to information and increase access to our website.
I'll just say, there's a excellent work. I know you have been really involved with HVM, and I think I could not think of a better organization when I suggested that to Martha. And there's a lot of passion, and they always, when we talk, they say like how helpful you are, and you know, they, they really, they really love you and are working with you. And, and as Steve was saying, it is amazing to see like this finally getting rolled into Mooresville, and it will be pretty helpful to the people. They'll feel welcomed, and I really thank staff and everyone for working through it.
Thank you.
Wonderful. So we'll see you in a couple of weeks for consideration of adoption, and then look forward to sustaining this and having it go forward.
Thank you.
Very exciting. Thank you. Okay. Future meetings, events, and community engagement opportunities. Looking forward into March, actually, we have Creek Week, March 16th through the 23rd, and on March 16th to kick it off, which is a little bit different, we have a holy celebration. So a couple of different things, and then March 23rd to end Creek Week, we'll have Green Day. As always, for a full listing of all our events, including council advisory committee meetings and everything like that, see the town calendar at www.mooresvillenc.gov. At this time, we're at Councilmember Comments. We'll start off with Mayor Pretem Garamella, followed by Councilmember Johnson.
I would say, I would start with saying wonderful ribbon cutting that we had for the Shiloh. And it is just the one, I was just, while I was thinking, you know, I don't know when we are for the South Lot, you know, but we would be adding two more basketball courts and volleyball courts, I think, because this whole area is slowly transforming. And I'm very, very happy to see the progress and all the effort come together.
Great. Councilmember Johnson, followed by myself.
I have no comments tonight.
Okay. I'll go, and then it'll be Councilmember Robati. I also, as Mayor Pretem said, enjoyed today's event and ribbon cutting earlier this afternoon at the Shiloh Park Grand Reopening. That was with council staff and Liz from our Parks and Rec Committee, who is actually here in the audience with us tonight, as is Bob Butler, also on the committee. Thank you both for being here. I look forward to more events like this as we all work together to deliver on the amenities our residents have asked for, and I really love spending time in our parks. Another thing, I sent an email earlier this week to the council because we've been asked by Leann Alfred Keith of Wake County Public School Systems if we'd be interested in a presentation regarding the Board of Education's strategic plan. So I was just wondering, how do you all feel about scheduling such a meeting? Her request appears to be during a town meeting, which makes sense to me as it is sometimes difficult to align everyone's schedule, but I'd love to hear the thoughts of the rest of the council members about this item. Would anyone have any thoughts about that? Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
I like the idea of having it presented at a council meeting as it is a very public issue in our town, and we have a lot of interest in what's going on with the schools. We have some schools coming online, so I definitely support having it in a public forum like this.
Okay. Councilmember Johnson, please.
So I'm going to agree with Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson. At a public meeting, I would just say to coordinate what's the appropriate meeting and, you know, timing at, at the next couple of meetings coming up. I don't know that this is something that has to happen, you know, necessarily in two weeks, but as, as, as time permits on our agenda.
Yeah, we can work on that for you. We'll play then and with some of the, we've got a variety of budget items coming up, as you know, that make some of those meetings a little heavy, but we can certainly make time, particularly if it's not a right now type item.
Yeah. The email did not really indicate urgency, but just a general desire. Councilmember Robati, please.
Yeah, I'd love to, excuse me, I'd love to get a presentation from the Board of Ed at one of the meetings. I think it'd be great if we could get as much lead time on that as possible so that we could let the public know that that's going to happen. I think a lot of people would be really interested in that.
Okay. Sounds great. I'd echo all the comments and also support it. Anyone else want to chime in on this one? Okay. So we have consensus to ask staff to go ahead and arrange that with Ms. Alfred Keith. Thank you very much. That was it for my comments. Thank you very much. I think next I said was Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Fender.
Yeah, just, I did just want to say that I was really sad to have to miss the Shiloh ribbon cutting today. Like some of my other council members, my time during the business day is not always my own, but, you know, I did have definitely a thought in my heart for everyone that was there, and thank you to my fellow council members who were able to be there and represent the team. And that's it.
Great. Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Rao.
Yeah, I wanted to thank the Public Works Department, trees for the triangle, and the volunteers from Tata, North Carolina, last Saturday for planting trees at Mooresville Community Park. It was a little chilly, but it was just a good event, and I hope to see us do more of those types of events in the future. That's it.
Councilmember Rao, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, just a couple. First of all, ditto on Shiloh Park, so proud of the team for that. Just a reminder for those listening, early voting in the March primaries is on Thursday. You need ID to vote. You can get your, you can early, you can register and vote at the same time. Starts on Thursday, races for governor, attorney general, legislature, council and state offices. I want to congratulate, congratulate Michael Langus for having another win in his team at Copa Airlines, which will be the Panama City. There's a lot of momentum with international flights, affects a lot of our residents here in Mooresville and around the region. And special thanks to IT Serv Alliance for their corporate social responsibility efforts last week at the RTP where they delivered some clothing to the Durham Rescue Mission. I just want to take a minute and just talk real quickly about economic development for the council and the public as we look at kind of what's going on in Mooresville. First of all, I attended last week the Riot State of the Region address, which is all of the leaders of IOT that was hosted by Tom Snyder, where he talked about collaboration. He mentioned Mooresville a few times in his remarks about some of the great things we're doing on our smart cities and data sharing and collaboration and what that means. But it also was really exciting for him to talk about jobs and job growth and where they're really seeing these startups really grow with their incubators and things like that. So it really made me think about our, us having something like that in our downtown. One of the things he mentioned, which was interesting, is that the number that he threw was $431 billion, which is the amount of incentives that we give to companies that we recruit that actually renege on their commitments. And so one fund that he mentioned, if you're listening as you're an entrepreneur, is a tweener fund, which is run by Scott Wingo, who used to run Channelizer, which is still in Mooresville. And so they give small $50,000 investments, so they're doing about 68 deals, 58 companies have invested in. And so just, it's a really great way for us to look at the funding that we can put in place to fund these small companies, and I think Mooresville could be a big part of that. I want to close out with a visit I had at a company called Susti on. I see Jim Simmons in the audience today, who is our leader in our Sustainability Committee. And it's a spinoff from Sustera, which was a Bill Gates investment, and it's just amazing that they're moving from Cary to Mooresville. And what was really fascinating is, is that the initial technology takes carbon out of the air and moves it into the ground. It's called carbon air capture technology. But now they're raising hundreds of millions of dollars to take those carbon products and develop other products for energy. So an example would be, like I asked them, I went to their facility, they said like if jets coming out of a plane, they would convert that fuel that comes out of the jet into renewable fuel, not, not fossil fuel. And so I just wanted to bring that up because I think it's really exciting that they're moving to Mooresville. I think this is a really great opportunity for us to collaborate with our environmental committee and look at how we bring it into our economic development plans and how these things are intertwined. I've, I've asked them to come to present to us if that's okay, or meet with the, with the committee and maybe do a tour of their facility. I know, you know, you love standing in the hooded stuff, Mayor, so I think that can be really exciting, so we'll figure that out. Thank you.
Thanks for leading on that. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any comments for this evening.
Good. Thank you. So you yield your time to the town manager. Any comments for the town manager, sir?
I'll take it.
Okay.
I have a couple of things for you. First, I want to, of course, formally introduce you to our new Assistant Town Manager, John Letney. So John is on day seven, so go easy. And, and I'm actually a little disappointed we're moving as fast as we are because I don't want him to get the expectation that we normally get out early of him to get the expectation that we normally get out early of these and be disappointed later. But we'll work through that. So I just wanna give John the floor, if it's okay, Mayor, just for a minute to offer a welcome and any comments he'd like to make.
Please do.
Thank you to the town manager. Good evening, council. Wonderful to be here. Great to meet you and some of you, meet you all again. Just in those few days I've been here, I've been very impressed with, first and foremost, the staff, the hardworking, dedicated people that you know and you know well and you have seen how they work and I'm getting to learn that. But also the quantity and quality of work that goes on here, the camaraderie, the teamwork. It's very evident in every building I go and every department I visit. And it's just wonderful to be a part of the senior management team, be part of the staff, and look forward to the vision for Morrisville and helping to carry out your vision for this community. So I look forward to a long working relationship with you all. Thank you.
Yeah. On behalf of the community, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of other sort of date type things for you, and I'll follow up with an email on some of these. But TriCC, the Triangle Community Coalition, we've not met with them as a council since probably September of '22. They've reached out and offered to do a coffee chat with you. I think there's value in doing that. So he sent a couple of dates, a couple I know won't work, so I've asked him for some more, but we, I will be sending you some options for that. It would likely be in a morning coffee meeting that we could probably set up at the historic Christian church with you, so watch for that. Also wanna share with you that at the retreat, we had discussed the, a meeting with the Chamber of Commerce. So they will be coming to the February 29th work session. So our council meeting is the 27th, but we do have a standalone work session in February that Thursday night. So that'll be one of the two items for that work session. And then the second item will be a budget workshop. But would like to ask that if you have any specific questions or topics you would like to suggest, they'd be prepared to discuss with you. If you would send those to me sooner than later, so we give them a fair heads up of what they might wanna be preparing for, to make that a meaningful conversation with you. And I'll, again, I'll send a reminder on that with the email as well. Mayor, you had asked about the potential for park tours, excuse me, tours for council. So Mary has offered a couple of dates coming up. One would be Saturday, March 2nd. That could likely be done in the morning for a couple hours to take you around to the seven parks, perhaps some of the other facilities, and just answer questions and make sure you've all seen what's going on there. The secondary option would be April 13th. And again, I'll get those out to you. I'm not aware of any conflicts on the 2nd. The 13th is the Battle of the Badges softball, but I don't know how many people will necessarily attend that or not. So this is another date for that option, so I'll get those out to you. I think lastly, we have done in the past one time where we invited council to come to a department head meeting prior to the meeting starting and do a little light breakfast and just have a chance to interact with the staff. I thought it was a very useful interaction before we headed to retreat, so we'd like to try to continue those. So I'll be sending out some dates that we have upcoming meetings where that could be a possibility if you're interested in being able to attend those, and we'll get on with that. And I think that's what I have, sir.
Well, that's a lot of good stuff looking forward to in the future. Thank you very much for getting that stuff going. Very nice. Okay. Excellent. We are at our second break, even though we haven't taken our first. So why don't we go ahead and take a 10, 15 minute break, reconvene at 7:16. Come up here and recognize one of the additional members of the Morrisville Public Education Advisory Committee who wasn't able to arrive earlier during the earlier presentation. But once again, thank you very much for your service. This is Ram Padell, also known as RP. Thank you so much for your time serving the town. We really appreciate it, and I'm sure that you're gonna keep doing it.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for joining us tonight. Have a good night.
You guys have great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Our town manager looks out for all of us. Okay. At this time, I'd like to pass the felicitation to Brittany Johnson, who's gonna take us through a very exciting program that we're really about to implement.
Yes, super excited to be here. So good evening, Mayor and council. Again, I'm very excited to be here and to give you all an update on the mural program and also share our site-specific mural design. So that's very exciting. So a little bit on the process tonight, the first thing we're gonna do, I'm gonna go through the presentation with you all, and then we're gonna have a chance to get up and take a closer look. So without further ado, I'll go ahead and get started. So presentation overview, this presentation will first provide an overview of the RFP process for the installation of murals on three town-owned properties. We'll also review the finalist selection process completed by the Parks, Recreation and Cultural Resources Advisory Committee. And third, we will also introduce those site-specific mural designs submitted by each finalist. A little on process, so our mural program flow sheet, flow chart, you all are kind of familiar with this, but starting with step one was research. We researched established mural programs and we assessed their strengths and weaknesses. And from there, we went on to step two, which was planning. We formed a multi-department mural committee advisory board, and that consisted of staff members from planning, public works, communications, and parks and recreation. Step three, we established the Town of Morrisville mural program framework. And so from there, what we did was identify our mural location, installation locations, which you all selected. We designed our approval process and we identified potential UDL amendments. Step four, we finalized the pilot program, and that consisted of our site-specific evaluation, including costs. We updated council once again. We also requested funds, and we also recommended and adopted UDO amendments. Now we are on step five. This is where the fun begins. We issued our request for proposals, and again, we are also reviewing those proposals and selecting muralists. Our last step will be step six, and that is installation, and we will install those A little more on the selection steps. So again, we formed that committee. We then identified the first three locations for installation. We released the RFP, and the Parks, Recreation and Cultural Resources Advisory Committee reviewed the RFP cimentals and recommended to town council their preferred designs for each location. And that was a two-step process, which I'll get into a little bit more in just a moment. The next thing, you all will review those final designs and select one for each location. We will award our contracts and commission the murals. So again, that was a two-step process with Parks and Recs. So step one, on October 25th, Parks and Recs reviewed all of the work samples and selected three finalists for each mural location. On January 31st, Parks and Recs then reviewed those site-specific designs and recommended one artist and design for town council for each location. And tonight, you all will be seeing me twice. So tonight, we will be discussing those mural selections, and then on the 27th, you all will make your final selection. And so tonight, what you will be doing, you want to review each of the selections, you wanna look at artistic narrative design, the appropriateness of the design for the location, including scale, content, color, and design in relation to the site. We also want to make sure that we reflect the stated goals as well as artist qualifications. We did complete background checks on all of the artists, so rest assured with that. And as well, we want to look at the originality of the design. So here's a picture from Parks and Recs. You can see that the advisory committee had lots of work on their hands there, and they did a wonderful job. I definitely want to, it can't be said enough how diligent they were with getting this done and really did a great job. We did receive over 23 cimentals, so it was a lot to review. A part of that selection, Parks and Recs did select three finalists for each location. For MFC, they selected Britt Flood and Simpata Agarwal, as well as Zach Bender. For Shiloh, Leo Rucker was selected. I will say that Mr. Rucker was unable to complete and move forward due to scheduling conflicts, as well as Ramon and Eric Davis. For fire administration, we have Gina Franco, Jermaine Powell, and Max Dowdell. So with reviewing those work samples and selecting these artists, the Parks and Recs advisory committee reviewed the work samples and provided an overall, they looked at overall composition of design, use of color, technique, creativity and originality, and also the craftsmanship and presentation. And staff completed those background checks again.
The background checks that you all completed, did those include a review of each artist's social media presence and just general digital presence?
So what we did, again, we looked at their work samples and then called other nays that they had worked for in the past or other organizations, and we completed those types So we will go ahead and get into our finalists for MFC first. A little bit on the finalists, I want to go ahead and, actually, I'll move on to our next slide, show you all the location on MFC where it will be located. So you'll see the interior wall here, and then it will also carry over to the overhang here. So it's important to note that there wasn't a theme provided for MFC, and as well as for the budget, it's a total budget of $14,000. And that's $9,000 for design and installation. And then we also received a $5,000 grant for our artist award, which was by the United Arts Council of Raleigh and Wake County, and that was with their Arts for Towns grant. So that's a great, great tool we have there. So moving on to our first artist, as we move forward to each artist, I am going to review a little bit about each artist, give you a little bit of a brief background, and then share a few words explaining their designs per their words. So our first artist for MFC is Britt Flood. A little bit on Britt, she is based in Chapel Hill. She has over five years' experience with large-scale public art. She's worked with the Town of Cary as well as the City of Sanford. Her artist goal is that she hopes that her work will aim to visualize moments of awe, and she feels an urgency to bring moments of love to everyday spaces, to bring visual poetry to all, and to activate overlooked spaces. So these are her three selections. So you'll see option 1A, 1B, and option 2. They do vary a little, and so as we're walking around, taking our closer look, I'll kind of point those things out. But her chosen concept is that she wants her piece to inspire the feeling of transformation and positivity and pride after working out and the healing that comes from water and working out at the gym. It's an abstract piece, and it's about time spent on oneself and water and exercising that allows for self-reflection, positivity, and growth. She sees this work as vibrant and immersive as well as imaginative. It showcased an abstract image of a person and movement and water and that person emerging from the colors. So that's a little bit about her pieces, and that really does, it really does explain all three pieces, so that's very much in common with all three. You'll see that the biggest thing about option 2, it does not carry over to the overhang, it does complete out, so that's one, one note for option 2. All right. Moving on to our next artist, our second artist for MFC, that would be Simpata Agarwal. A little bit about Simpata. Simpata is based here in Morrisville. She has over 17 years of experience. She has collaborated with the City of Raleigh and the Town of Chapel Hill in the past. Simpata says that her work is based on our neighborhood and to highlight the vibrant tapestry of people from diverse backgrounds and to really showcase that diversity and the tremendous growth within this area. Her vision for this mural is that it will vividly display our community and that is rooted in progress and lives in the rich soil of our diversity. So a little bit about each of these two pieces, Simpata did supply two separate designs. The first one, and I'll speak of this one first, this one is entitled Roots and Wings. It's completed in the Ghan style of art. Ghan is, is made from people that are indigenous to central India. The Ghanes are a large indigenous community, and the art is very much central to their lives. It is the Ghan's belief that viewing good images begets good luck. And so a little bit about this design, she would like the final design to really depict the essence of Morrisville and highlighting its geographical location in the heart of the triangle. So you'll see that at the bottom portion of design, it's actually a tree emerging from that triangle. Design shows a flourishing tree that emerges from the triangle once again, and that it is a thriving tree that shows the progress of this place that we all call home and celebrates the growth and diversity of our community. The tree offers a haven to different, a variety of trees and, of birds rather, and colorful and, that are colorful and have different patterns. Each tree, each bird rather, is detailed with different patterns, and that symbolizes the diversity within our community. There is an airplane that is depicted here in the upper portion, and that, that tree is in the form of a fish. It has a number of people riding on the airplane, which indicates the diverse background of people visiting and living in our town. And the airplane also shows that our community, that we can offer wings to our community and that we can truly soar once together. Lastly, the upper portion of this one, it extends to, it stems the idea of a sky upon the upper portion, and it has the blazing sun and flying birds and clouds, and this indicates a bright future for the town. Moving on to Simpata's second design, we have the story of Morrisville, and this one is completed in the Warley style. And so a little bit about the Warley style, it is simple and expressive, and it is an Indian tribal art tradition. And this one is monochromatic, so you have that kind of brown slash red mud black background, and you have the white placed on top. The, one of the standouts for Warley art is that it's based on the fact that human beings, birds, animals, insects, and all things, everything moves day and night, and that life is about movement. So for this final design, again, Simpata wanted to highlight the geographical location, so you do have the triangle here in the center. You also have in the lower portion of the design, you have Lake Crabtree and a cricket pitch, and all of these things are kind of coexisting with nature. Next, we have this portion where there are houses representing the residents of Morrisville. And then also, at the top, you have our RDU airport, and the airplane, again, is about transportation and signifies motivation and direction. Again, at the top, we have the sky, and it again has the blazing sun, flying birds and clouds, which is indicative of our bright future. So our last artist for MFC is Zach Bender. Mr. Bender is located in Raleigh. He has over seven years of experience, and he has worked with the Town of Benson in the past. For his goal for this project was to illustrate swimming, exercise, and community through showing the activities that are performed within the Aquatic Center. And so with this one, you'll see that this is, this is the design altogether, but this is the wall portion and this is the upper portion, so you'll see how that kind of wraps around on the side itself. All right. Well, moving on to our next location, well, not moving on quite yet, we'll do quite a little recap here. So a recap, these are all of the, all of the selections for MFC. I do want to note that the Parks, Recs, and Cultural Resources Advisory Committee did select this design by Simpata, the Root and Wing. So that is their recommendation for MFC, and that was a vote of four to three. Second place came in with three votes, was for Mr. Zach Bender. All right. Moving on to our finalists for Shiloh, again, we have two finalists, as one was unable to complete. For Shiloh, just to give you all, this is, you all were there today, so you have the short side along the rear and then the other side as well. And so that will be located. The theme for this one was the, was celebratory of community, and there is a $9,000 budget for this one. Moving on to the artists, our first one is Ramon. Let's see here.
He's from Greensboro, isn't he?
Yes. Yes. Very nice. So local to Greensboro, has over seven years of experience in art. He has collaborated with the City of Um, he has collaborated with the city of Greensboro multiple times. And for Shiloh, um, his overall, uh, intent is to create a mural that is representative of wellness, harmony, peace and diversity. That can speak to all visitors. So a little bit about this design, so first this, um, upper portion is showing how the design works in one continuing, continuous piece. And then this is how it's broken down per facade, um, so just a note there. But, uh, again, um, on the extreme left, so that would be the short side of the building, um, as you approach. You will see, uh, the depiction of the history of Shiloh and, um, the Cedar Fort community. Um, and it's a, um, representation of a slave community and farming in this area. So you'll see that the story begins here and, um, and the, the church represented here as well. Um, beyond that point, you'll, you'll move into more of a, um, a story of history and, and celebration. And so, uh, what you have are figures that are joyful and swaying and, and flowing and jumping and dancing. Um, the figures are kept without facial features and physical hints of race and ethnicity, so that everyone can relate to the mural. Uh, there are butterflies, which are symbolic for the transformation of history to the present and future. You have music and dance that is depicted, um, at the extreme right, um, to represent the art and culture of the area. And then there are also natural elements like plants, flowers, birds and suns and moons that illustrate and show the, um, connection of human, of humans to nature. So that's a little bit about that. Moving on, we have Mr. Eric Davis, um, who is our second artist for Shiloh. A little about Eric Davis, he is based in Meben. He has over eighteen years of experience. He has collaborated, um, with, uh, with, uh, multiple municipalities within Orange County. Um, his artist's goal is one that, uh, murals and public art, um, are, are landmarks and that they create a sense of place. That public art evokes a feeling about location and that he wants all that, that visit to remember both residents and community, uh, members alike. The experience they have in these places. The artist believes in creating public art that enhances engage and that is engaging to the community. As well as he believes that art has the ability to bridge gaps and transcend social barriers, creating a sense of unity and understanding amongst diverse groups. So for this piece, um, again, this one, uh, on the, this is the side, the short side and then around the rear. And then the side that's in, towards inward of the park. Um, so again, on the first side, we have Reverend James Dunston, who was the, um, pastor of Shiloh. A little bit about Reverend Dunston, he expanded the role of pastor when he was there. And he established an economic and educational base for the community, um, including, uh, under his leadership. He, uh, encouraged the purchase of farmland and, and community organizations for a co-op for a store and, uh, for area residents. Uh, the legacy of Reverend Dunston, um, in this community and Shiloh Church is special in that he is the only person carrying on the grounds, um, of the church line. For the rear of the building, it depicts, uh, a mobile library for the back of the building. So, um, you know, initially libraries were segregated and so one way to distribute books to, um, children of color. Um, were those, um, mobile, uh, libraries. So that's what's depicted as well as a child reading. Um, on the far side, you have M Lata and his family, which is depicted. And he was a freed slaves who conducted, um, schools, a school for, for other freed slaves. Right, so a recap for, uh, Shiloh here. Um, and I will note that, um, the Parks, Recs and Cultural Resources Survivor Committee did select Roman's work for this particular location. Oh, yes, um, so it was a five to two. So, um, thank you, Mayor, uh, forgot that note, so yeah, it was a vote of five to two. So it was celebratory of community, that was the celebratory of the community. That was our, um, theme. It was to, we, you know, of course leave room for interpretation and also give some sort of balance. All right, moving along, so we will go on to our finalists for fire administration. We do have three finalists for this location. So a little bit more about this one, um, so the location, it will be on the side that faces, um, Chapel Hill Road. As well as on the facade facing Morrisville Carpenter. Um, there is a pilaster here, so it's a natural break for this to, uh, for, for the mural itself. This sign will be relocated, relocated as well as the shutters removed. And the planter boxes will be a part of the mural. So you'll see that as we walk around, the artists have indicated that that will be painted as well. So just notes there. So for theme, although there wasn't an official theme provided for this mural location, the artists were instructed to envision this location as a welcome to Morrisville. And they were also asked to make this design colorful and truly placemaking. Um, there is a eight thousand five hundred dollar budget for this mural. Okay, jumping right into our first finalist for this location would be Gina Franco. So Gina is based in Greensboro as well. She has over four years of experience. She has, uh, collaborated with multiple municipalities in the past, including, um, the town of Benson, town of Reevesville, city of Greensboro. And this city of Gibsonville. Her goal is that she believes that in her artistic style, um, she has experience and that she would like to promote community engagement. As well as, um, she has had much success in large scale projects. She shows work that ranges in style and theme and that she would like to, um, showcase the spirit and values of community. So a little bit more about this design. So Gina has designed, um, this, this particular di- design, which is inspired by the rich diversity of Morrisville. Um, the main elements, elements of the mural would be the doves. Doves are, um, recognized worldwide as symbols of peace, love and hope. The presence of doves within the mural can be symbolized as, um, bringing diverse cultures together. Um, and that they are seen as messengers of peace, as well as bridging and connecting people of different ethnicities, religions and backgrounds. Fostering the understanding and appreciation for one another. Each dove represents or displays a diverse, uh, physical characteristics and they, including color and pattern. So, um, again, this is to help highlight the beauty and that arises from diversity in nature and in the community. Our next, um, finalist is, uh, J P Jermaine Powell. Uh, a little bit about Mr. Powell, he is, uh, based in Fique Verena. He has over ten years of experience. He is currently the North Carolina Museum of Arts, Art, Artists and Residents. He, uh, is, he has collaborated with multiple municipalities in the past, including the city of Raleigh, city of, uh, Fayetteville, as well as the city of Durham. As a, um, muralist and public artist, it is his hope that, um, his mission is to capture and narrate the unique stories of communities such as Morrisville and other cities within North Carolina. His goal is to create art in public spaces that will unite, um, the unique diverse backgrounds. And histories and legacies, legacies, um, through the powerful medium of art and storytelling. So the first, uh, selection by Mr. Powell is this, um, New Horizons, um, mural concept. The concept focuses on the theme of connecting community, nature and animals. This concept also focuses on families, older residents and single professionals. So that's what you, who you will see depicted in this particular arrangement. Our next selection for Mr. Powell is the Live Well, uh, Live Connected concept. This one, um, the concept focuses on the positive theme, uh, themes of connecting nature and the importance of wonder and play and recreation within the town of Morrisville. So you'll see a child jumping and interacting with, um, butterflies and things of that nature. And, and, and to note, uh, this is the view from the corner, so you can see what you'll see from, um, highway, uh, fifty-four as well as Morrisville Carpenter. Our last selection for Mr. Powell is the Community Collect, Connected theme. And this one, it, uh, focuses on the town of Morrisville color and tagline. Um, there is also a focus on building strong communities and recreation and overall the, the town of Morrisville residents coming together. So that, um, it's the last selection by Mr. Powell. Okay, our, uh, last artist for fire administration and the last artist in our presentation tonight, um, is Mr. Max Dowdell. Uh, Mr. Dowdell is based in Hillsborough. He has over twenty-two years of experience. He is, um, currently the lead artist with the Morehead City J C Park re- um, renovation. He has, um, partnered with multiple municipalities in the past, including the town of Hillsborough, town of Apex and the town of Chapel Hill, as well as the city of Durham. So, uh, his passion is to, uh, through creative placemaking, which involves the use of art and design to revitalize, uh, public place, public spaces. And to create more vibrant and inclusive communities. Max believes that public art is, has the power to transform ordinary place, spaces into something extraordinary. Uh, to spark conversations, to engage and, and re- in reflection and to bring people together in new and unexpected ways. Uh, Mr. Dowdell did supply about seven, uh, design choices. So we will take a closer look as we walk around, but one important thing to note, um, these would represent the windows for, um, fire admin. They won't be painted, so he just represented those by, um, black boxes as well as the door. Um, and you'll see here where the, um, the flower boxes are indicated as well. So, um, we'll kind of go through these, but we'll take, um, a closer look as we walk around. So you'll see them, I'm just going to kind of pan slowly through them. Um, they all depict, um, nature, trees, birds, butterflies, things of that nature. I will note that this selection from Mr. Dowdell was the Parks, Recreation and Cultural Resources Survivor Committee's recommendation for fire administration.
Was there, was the artist, do you think, open at all to like if we like this one, but we wanted it to say Morrisville as some of the others do? Would that be a possibility or is this, this the design that's being proposed?
So, um, we do want to be delicate in the, in the suggestions that we make. However, um, the artists are open to making minor, uh, alterations. And so when we say minor, we want to make sure that we don't, uh, really tamper with the intention of the artist and what their vision is for the project. But certainly they are open to making those types of changes. Let's see here, and this, this is the last selection by Mr. Dowdell as well. So, um, at, before we get up and, um, we will be evaluating again a little bit more. We're evaluating and having those discussions tonight and then, um, at our next meeting on the twenty-seventh, we'll have that decision. Uh, so while we are evaluating, we want to review, you know, the artistic merit of design, the appropriateness of the design for the location. So we'll look at things like scale, content, color and design. Um, also, did they really reflect this, the theme that was provided? Um, artist qualifications, again, we know that they've worked with multiple municipalities, so that's more of something that we can say box check on that one. And then also the originality of the design. So, um, again, also, um, I'm going to go back for the next slide to keep that up there as we walk around. But next steps after this, um, after this meeting tonight, um, again, you all reviewing, next meeting you will be making a selection. Um, on March first, we will notify those, um, artists that were selected. We will be doing contracts between March fourth and fourteenth and mural installation will be between March fifteenth and May thirtieth. Um, so, uh, that is the end of the presentation. Again, I'm going to go back to the evaluations that you can keep in mind, what we'll be evaluating on tonight. And to give a little bit about process, this is, this is what I hope will, will occur, okay? Um, so we're all going to get up, we're going to go look at them together. Um, they are grouped by location. I'm going to give you all, um, dots. Um, these are stickers that you can place on. So our first walk around, you're going to have your initial gut reaction, what you like, what you, you know, which one you're really automatically drawn to. Art is subjective, so we want to keep that in mind. So I'm going to give you three dots and they're green. So you're going to place them, one for each location on your favorite, um, selection for each location. Once we see where we're all kind of landing, there are a lot, a lot of dots over here, not so many over there. We'll have, uh, we can guide our conversation from there. Um, and then once we have those discussions, then I'm going to give you your blue dots. And these will be the ones where we're going to say, these are the ones we're really going to focus in on. And from there, hopefully, um, have some, some good discussion.
We have a question.
Yes.
On the, um, fire station one. What was the reasoning for like on the long section, only doing two thirds of it?
I had the same question.
Yeah.
It looks funny when you these ones that are by, um, Jermaine Powell where he overlays his design on the building.
There is a natural brick pilaster there that you can't really see in the photo. So it does project from the facade there. And so there is a sign that's currently here, which we moved to that location. And so with all of that taking place, it's more so, I think that will balance it out and it will not have that effect.
I had the same question.
How exactly are these going to be installed? Are they going to be painted somewhere else? Put on here, are they going to be painted straight on the ground?
Onto the facade. Yes, and so, um, the budget for that one was higher and so that does encompass, um, the rental of a lift and things of that nature that will be needed.
So what do you say, was there a column?
There's a pilaster, um, that's a projection, a pilaster. And so that's a projecting, a projection of brick from the facade, so it does sit away from the side. Um, a pilaster is essentially a column that does not have as much relief. So imagine like in this facade here, you see that it steps away, so it's a natural break in the facade.
Can you turn on your mic?
There it is, there it is.
So, so still, I mean, why did you guys decide to stop it there?
Really, it, it came down to the fact of the, the square footage that was allotted and we want to keep in things, um, keep in mind budget and those types of concerns as well. Um, as well as, uh, we want to make sure that we, uh, have space for the signage to move. And so all of those are various factors that contribute.
So you're going to move that Morrisville sign over there, okay.
Please, please do remember to keep your mics on for this conversation. And as you leave the table, please make sure you take your microphones with you. If there's any conversation, we just want to make sure that that's recorded. It is an open live meeting. And Brittany will have a microphone for her if there's any questions as well, thank you.
Okay, can I ask one more? When we get up to look at them, can you remind us again, the theme or no theme when we get up there?
Yes, I will, um, I will be there to assist. And so again, um, I'm going to give you your first round of dots and this is again, your first gut reaction before we have that conversation. Just to see where we are and if we are, you know, on the same page or.
I think Satish had a question.
No, two of them, the two.
I had one question, like, are we lighting this? Like, you know, because I would like, uh, lights, you know, basically.
That wasn't in the budget.
But, but that's not a big, uh, thing because it would be good in the nighttime, you know, eh, when you go through it.
That, that is very true and that's something that we should consider. Um, again, things, um, like budget will come into play with that, something that we can definitely have a larger conversation.
I mean, like, M A F C already has a lot, so it's not, you know, all they had is focusing on.
And that's something that hopefully I can get back to you on in the next meeting.
Okay, so we're not allowed to talk and just do dots right now.
You know, it can be, you, it, you are allowed to talk.
Are we allowed to talk?
Um, I am going to give you your, um, dots now and then, uh, we will have a conversation at each, uh, location.
Okay. Thank you. Field trip, see if. All right, you never get to get up.
I mean, when I have it on.
Let's see. All right, where are we starting, Brittany? I know, that one's this Morris.
Start with, uh, M A F C and we're on our way over.
Perfect. Steve, we're starting over here. Uh-oh, sorry. Of his different drum.
The interesting thing is, you know, I like this at the same time. The themes they have used, even though they did not, it's an open.
Wait, there was no theme here.
There's no theme, exactly.
No theme.
There was no theme.
Is, is your mic on? Yeah, it is.
Okay, cool.
See, you and me, always.
I gotta have my.
So again, you want to make sure to have your first initial gut reaction and you're only placing one dot on each selection for each location.
The thing is.
Yes, thank you.
I really like that this one has the town colors.
Someone has not put their dot.
I really like that.
There's one.
Remind us the theme again here, Brittany?
Yeah. So, for, um, for Fire Administration, and I want to make sure that I read it so we can...
I like that. That one's too green.
Yeah, but it has the town colors. That's what I like about it.
There wasn't really an official theme provided, however, the artist had suggested to, um, envision this location.
Just think how that's going to look.
As well as they asked to make sure the designs were colorful and placemaking.
I kind of like, uh...
Colorful placemaking. All right. I can get on with that one.
I just think that's going to look so cool when cars are stopped there for fifteen minutes.
I agree. I agree. With that on here, I agree. But we don't know if we can get that. I think we could... You're putting a dot over there. We don't know if we're going to be able to get the... So, you like that one, but you like it with the town name on it, right?
This is a, this, this is part of this one, right?
I feel you. I like it.
I like it.
No, this is the same artist.
I like the same.
And then that is the same artist.
I really liked that a lot.
Oh, yeah.
But I love, I just like that there's more people on this one.
And you can't vote for that one and that one.
Why not? This is the same.
This is the same.
All together.
Same set, yeah.
Well, I screwed that up. Well, then what didn't I vote for?
Yes, all of the are for Fire Administration.
Oh, we still have that one over there.
Shala. I don't have a dot left. All right. All right. Somebody come over here, peel my dot off of this one, please. Oh, I got it. I love it. Thank you, babe. I'll see what the theme was. This one was over here. Tell me again what the theme was, Brittany, here. Celebration of the community. Celebration of the community. Yeah. Shala was celebratory of the community.
I like that, but I like that design, but it's not as important to highlight.
I agree. But can we put that somewhere else?
I mean, like, right now, all of that information is just on this little kiosk.
So, I want to go back and look at the, um, tobac- tobacco barn. Cause I think there's some of this out at the tobacco barn too, but I could be, I gotta remember. What I like about this is that it's on the side of a building. Like, I don't think it gets much more celebrate the community than that.
But really paint like this is the thing, because this is painting. This is like a picture stuck into one. So, I want to ensure what is really the end product. Because you may see this, but is it what it is?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Like, is it actually going to look like that? You're saying that he might have just taken a picture, superimposed it on the building.
Yeah, that's what I want to know.
But we don't know if he can recreate that necessarily.
But they do that kind of stuff all the time.
But these are, they had a draw.
But they do, but they do that kind of stuff all the time, like on the sides of cars.
Yeah.
So, the question I have is, the pictures, look, coming here, they're superimposed on the wall. It's not really a drawing as the others are. Will this look exactly as it is or it's a different depiction?
So, it will look a lot like this. This one has the picture superimposed. Um, if you get a chance to look at Mr., um, Davis's artwork, this is something that he routinely does with, uh, portraits. And so, he does have a really good eye for capturing. So, I'll say that for sure.
So, it's somebody didn't vote. There's only six dots. Who didn't vote? It's you? All right. Break the tie, man. Let's go. We got another round. We got another round.
This is the gut reaction and then we're going to have a conversation about each location and we will go from there. All right. It looks like everyone has had a chance to give their initial, uh, review. So, let's go ahead and, um, since we're all over here, looking at Shala, let's go ahead and kind of have a discussion. This one has a very close vote. We have four here, three for, um, Ramon. And this one again was recommended by Parks and Recs. Let's see here. So, automatic differences between, we have one that's extremely colorful. This one is more monochromatic. Um, this one depicts, you know, the history and then travels in with the story, um, to present day. And this one very much so is a nod to the history of the location.
But no one's going to know that that has anything to do with history.
Anne, I don't think that it does capture the history, actually.
Looking at that, I would not even... I mean, I like that design.
No, it's not that I don't like it.
It's very colorful and I would love to use that somewhere else, but given the option of highlighting...
The actual community.
Yeah, the history, the Si- the Shala community. Um, I like that.
Okay. So, we've heard from, um, from a member that selected this location. Can someone that selected this location let us know what drew you to this particular design?
I chose that one because, well, first of, it's a playground. Um, so that, and I thought about this while we were out there today at the ribbon cutting for the playground, um, that I wanted something that was more colorful and light and, um... So, that, that, that kind of drew me to that option. I also like the idea, um, and the artist said this in her write-up. I like the idea that the people here depicted, we can all see ourselves in any one of these people. There was no, there's no specific, um... Facial expression or, or any kind of features. Thank you. And, um, and so, I thought of that when, when the theme was to celebrate the community. I realized that this is a park in a special community. Um, and that, and this option kind of depicts that. But I was thinking at, at the greater community and who we are, um, and, and who will be on that playground? Who will be out there playing at the program? And it's actually interesting that Giselle talked today, um, earlier about, um, our demographics and who we are. Uh, you know, so that, that really kind of, that did it for me, that option.
Okay, great. Um, I will, um, point out about this specific location. This one, you will have an opportunity to really close, have a close-up look at this design. With some of the other locations, like Fire Admin, you may be viewing it from afar a lot of times and you may not have a chance to really truly interact with it. So, um, the level of detail here, which is present in both designs, I think should be, um, taken into account. Um, again, it's a very close, uh, decision and the fact that we only have two for this location. I'm glad that we've had the discussion. Uh, I'm not sure if you were able to sway one another. But, um, I'm hoping that by the next meeting, you all will, you know, have a consensus, hopefully. Um, but again, there's, there's not much to say about these other than the points that you all have made. Uh, one is truly reliant on history and the other is a little bit more of history and then starting from there. Um, color versus not having that color. Um, but again, both very powerful in their own right. So, um, again, no wrong decision. I'll say that for all of them. Um, it, it looks like the, the, again, it was a pretty even split. So, I think that by the next meeting, hopefully, either you have swayed one another or you have it. And we will go with the majority. Um, so, um, but yeah.
Question, I meant to say, we have the bond, right? Like, uh, which talks about...
Tobacco barn.
Tobacco barn. But that talks about the, uh, the Shala community. So, my main reason of doing this is more about the area where it is and kind of it blends in with it. And so, but at the same time, and with the new park, it's completely transformed, you know? So, a thought at the back of my head is, should we use this as an opportunity and to depict the Shala community or the bond already is doing it? Or does that bar need an uplift there? So, because the whole area is around that. So, I think that's heavily influencing this or that is based on that area because we have dedicated a bond there too.
So, I will tell you, I, I think that thi- this is beautiful. I, I would... For me, if I, if we could figure out a, a place to do this somewhere else. So, you're right. So, I even said before, the tobacco barn, I need to go back out there and see what pictures are depicted out there already. I've not looked at them in a while. So, some of these may already, quite frankly, be out there. Not on the wall of the barn, for sure, but the tobacco barn. When you do that, can I go with you? Yeah.
And I also wanted to note about this one, um, the train does pass by this location. So, you will have views of it from that. Um, so, that's one of the things you can kind of keep in mind.
Which, which side will be facing the train track?
So, it will be this side here and more of this one, this location.
Okay.
I, yeah, I picked this one just because it, it told the history more of, which to me was really important. Cause I feel like when I run, um, when I go and walk in the parks and I see the mile markers that explain who these leaders are, I think it's really important to keep it visual. And so, and I think in Morrisville, we've sort of gotten away from that history. So, this is important, I think. Just, I mean, I like that part, but it doesn't really tell me the story of Shala.
Yeah. And it certainly puts a face to those names, so.
And another, like, that's a really good point because with the town, I mean, the town is just growing and changing. And, you know, nothing is going to be recognizable pretty soon. And I do think that it's, I think it's important to have a place where the actual history and actual leaders are depicted. I haven't, I haven't actually seen the tobacco barn, you know, so I'd like to go out there and see that. But I, I just think that this is, I just think it's really good that there's, that there's actual people and actual history. I mean, we, you know, we talk about history all the time, like the Pew House and the, you know, and the Shala community. I think, that's why I picked that one.
Well, and I, I like to remember that, like especially the neighborhood where I live, all of that land was once owned by the black li- landowners in that area. And we, you know, a lot of Morrisville was owned by these families. And we've, that past is being erased as we build and build and build and build.
If I could just share a couple of thoughts. So, um, that's an important historical area. We have a number of markers there already. So...
But it's not as, oh, sorry. I should, I'm sorry.
I appreciate your insights though. I like the colorfulness, especially near the new playground. When I went there today, I stood behind, there's the batting cage there with all the netting. And that pretty much blocks everything and you can only get like fifteen feet away from it. So, I think it's going to be hard to really understand the back of the, uh, restroom area for that. But this is so colorful, I think it just sort of grabs you, even if you only see a little bit of it. So, that's why I really like the colors. I think this is more youthful. It's more of a playground area. I would, what I'd really like is when you explained all these people and what they did in the bookmobile, I would love to have a couple more of the Shala, the Church Street Walking Loop signs that depict those things, if they're not already done somewhere else on the loop, right in this space. So, I would, I would love to do all things. Take those pictures, but don't put them on the side of a thing, because the ones on the right, that's just facing the basketball court. So, I mean, it's kind of like an audience watching basketball, which is fine. And this one's just facing the shelter, Dunston. But the back, I think, doesn't really work in this location unless we get rid of the, the cage and there's a reason for people to go to the back. I think people will see this one from the shelter, but they'll just see monochromatic shadows.
Look, this is maybe an artistic quibble, uh, like, but I think that it's so weird that this, this whole thing, like the, the people are just like circles and forms and then, you know, and like, like you say, you know, no characteristics, no nothing. And then right over here, like all of us, this to me comes out of nowhere. I think, I think this is killing it for me. You know, I think if that was another person like this, person like this, no characteristics, no... I think I'd be sold on this one, but I think that is my problem.
I think also, um, there are, you know, hats and things depicted in the beginning portion. So, it's something, um, it's more of the style of this artist and, um, it certainly gives more movement and shape and, and those things, um, that are designed to, um, to really give a little bit more of interest, a little bit more interest. So, um, I'll say that that's probably what, what led to that, um, decision-making. Um, but again, so this is step one. Step two, so we're going to go ahead to each of the other locations and then you all will get your blue dots and sit through that conversation. If you all have swayed one another, we'll see if those votes have changed.
I, I have one last thing. Uh, I was thinking as a compromise, if we can get, like, you know, the, we have shelter there. You know, the shelter has posts. And so, if you can get pictures on that, on the top, to talk about the history, that would also suffice. Picnic Shelter.
So, this reminded me, I don't know if you all remember, years ago, we hung banners in, um, the windows here in the lobby. And they were of, um, I think the Reverend Dunston was one of them and Mrs. Sharman was one. And, um, for me, that, that was more appropriate for these kind of pictures. So, it, I don't know if that's what you're thinking about. You're not thinking about that out there, are you?
Something or like, you know, even like, uh, uh, because I don't want it to be subject to vandalism too. Like something which is prominent wood or something which is there can't be broken, but at least still depicts, you know? Because the Shala community history is, is tech. It's not like... So, it has to be not just one or two pictures. If, if someone really wants it, they can go into the shelter and...
I think you're saying the same thing Tina's saying about have this out there and more, more evident, more prominent.
With some more explanations.
All right. Maybe it's time to move on from that one? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Great discussion. Um, we will move on to Fire Administration. So, we do have a number of, uh, choices for this one. So, again, this is Gina Franco. These three are Mr. Powell and all of these are Mr. Dowdell. Um, this was a selection by, um, Recreation from Parks and Recs. And this is, again, um, it looks like the majority of you all chose that one as well. So, we have four for that one, uh, two for this upper design and then one for, uh, Ms. Franco. Uh, so, I will kind of start out, give you all a little bit about this particular one. Again, this one will be more so than the others viewed quickly. So, you want to see something that is going to be large and eye, and eye-catching. Um, again, it was also, um, a directive for the theme for this one was make sure it was placemaking and welcoming to the, to the town. So, um, I think that all of the designs really do capture that. But again, are you going to see these things with that kind of, if you're sitting in traffic, you'll have multiple things to view within the design? Or if you're kind of zipping by on a good day, then you will maybe have a chance to really kind of get the essence as you're going by quickly as well. So, I guess we will start out with the one that has most of your votes. If there wants to be one person that selected this particular design. Um, and from the fact that you don't have any votes for the others, we'll automatically eliminate those and we'll focus on the ones that do have, uh, choices that you made. So, would one person like to just kind of say what they responded to most about this particular design?
I love that one, but I do want to say that I want to use this somewhere else. Like, I think this is stunning. I, I did vote for that one. Cause I just, I just liked it, the butterflies and the kids and that. I just liked it. But the, the one right above it, I, I just want to use somewhere else. It's so beautiful.
I would agree with that. I, I do like that. The one with the face that is pretty.
So, I like this one too. I voted for that one. But, um, I was with Anne asking if, if he would somehow incorporate the Morrisville in that one. Cause I love the word Morrisville in those. I really do too. I like this. And I would still pick this, even if he couldn't do the word Morrisville. I'd still pick it.
Okay. I think that's something that is relatively minor in nature, um, that could be added to this particular, uh, design. So, that's something that we can have that communication with artists about and, um, and seeing if that's a viable option. So, um, okay. Thank you very much for those thoughts on that one. We'll go on to this one and then again, we will, uh, have another vote up here. So, um, for this one, for Mr. Powell, someone that voted for this one, would you mind sharing why you selected this one?
Me and Anne. I, I voted for this one just because I like the, um, colors and the, the people that are depicted.
I do like that it has a town motto on it. That is one thing.
You do. I like the color. And I didn't like this one because of the black windows.
The windows won't be black.
They're not going to put black, they're not going to paint the...
They're going to be the same as these.
My son is an artist, not me.
It'll be real windows.
Oh, okay.
That will be the way he desires to depict the windows.
They're not going to go paint the windows black.
Okay. So, those are just going to be windows.
They're going to be windows like these windows. There you go. Lots of butterflies.
I'm sorry. I feel like a fool.
So, it's really color that drew you to this particular one? And so, you know, uh, we do have, uh, that, that blue and orange, um, with... um, which are complementary colors, so you're automatically kind of drawn to that. Um, and so, you know, again, that's something that really resonated in a lot of his work, as well as Mr. Dowdell, um, using colors that, uh, would automatically be contrary on the color wheel. So that's something that you're just innately drawn to, which is understandable. Um, moving on to this one for Ms. Franco, um, the person that selected this one.
That would be this is the person. So what I liked about this is, is it, this is a welcoming sign to the town. And you're gonna be going pretty fast. So to have these large birds and flowers as you're going at a very rapid rate, you'd be able to see it better. I li, I like the butterflies, but I don't think you would be able to see them as well as these, uh, images. And this doesn't have Morseville either. So point taken.
But remember, you're gonna be stopped there a lot.
I mean, you do. You spend a lot of your life stopped there.
But I was thinking about our lawn signs that we have all designed very carefully and then how, how you think about colors and, and when you're in motion and so forth. Yes. Right, right. So that's what I was thinking, you know? But anyways, um, I appreciate all the feedback on the other ones.
The only thing is, like, I'm honestly, like, I'm sitting here and I, I can't really, I guess they'd be way bigger. That's a point. But, but like, I honestly, I can't, I can't readily pick out the birds, you know? Like, I mean, you told me they were birds, so now I see them. But to me, it's not, like, it just seems kind of like a, it, it reads more as shapes, even as I'm standing here. So I don't know what would happen if I was blowing by it at thirty-five miles an hour.
That's what I was.
Yeah, they will be big. I don't, I'm just saying, like, you know.
So I could be talked into the butterfly one.
Yeah, me too. I think I've been talking.
Would it make a difference if it said Morseville?
Either way.
Well, um, no need to, yeah, we're gonna get the second round of dots and we're gonna see where we lie. And from there, that will really inform what you all will be thinking about between this meeting and the next. So, um, no need to remove those. You'll get your blue dots in just a moment. So on to our last location, which would be M A F C. Um, let's see here. There are three for this design, three for the middle, um, on this one, and then one for, uh, Mr. Bender on the end. So, uh, would someone that selected this particular design like to speak to you why?
So I do like this style of art, but most importantly, what I heard is this is a Morseville resident that submitted this art. And I really think that resonated with me, that someone from our own community, um, put forth, um, a submission. And it represents the culture that we have, um, from a lot of our population.
I didn't realize that was a Morseville resident. Thanks for bringing that up.
I would, I would be caution, I would caution you all to not really let that play a role. We do have all North Carolina-based artists in that with a stipulation for responding to the RFP. Again, I know that, you know, you can't walk that out, you know, all the way. But again, all the artists have put a lot of work into these designs, so you want to make sure.
I, I'm not being dismissive of anyone. What I'm saying is they are representing the culture of the community. And we have a large representative of Indian culture in our community. And that's reflective in that art piece. Not dismissing anybody's hard work or being from North Carolina. I value having something that connects me and our community and representative of the, the culture that we have.
Yeah, the style. Um, and this one is in the Ghan style. So that one is indigenous of India. And I can't remember the exact location within India, but certainly. Um, and again, it has a lot of symbolism. Um, this one is the Worley style. And, uh, this one is an abstract piece. So that's something that's more of the transformative nature of water. And then this one is more realistic and very much so. This is what you're going in this location to do. You're working out, you're, um, engaging with water and very much a, uh, realistic expectation of what's happening within the building. So kind of keep all of those things in mind. I also want you to keep in mind that when you're viewing this one, you will be viewing it very closely, because you will be entering, entering the building. And so you'll be able to see all of those details very closely. So, um, that's one thing you need to keep in mind if you're looking at this one as well. All right. So someone that selected this one in the middle, would you like to speak us to why?
I picked it. I like the colors and I like the abstract nature of it. I like the, I like the middle one better than the other two, because the face is bigger. And I think the details will pop out more with the face being bigger. There's not like as much space around the face. That's just kind of lost.
All right. And this one is very similar to this, um, one here. This one had a little bit of leaves, so it's a nod to nature. And this one is opposed to this one here. You can see the water as well, um, in both of them. This one has a different face. And again, it does not carry over to the other.
Yeah, I, I picked this one just because of the colors and it being abstract. I think it's more impactful. It's, it's.
I really love the colors in this one. I really do. But I got sort of sidetracked by the fact that the woman looks like she has a spike coming out of her head. I honestly would have picked this one except for that. Did anybody else not see that? I gotta go look.
Yeah, part of the end there.
Look. I'd have picked that one, but she looks like a unicorn. Because I really like the colors. And I love the fact that it's got like the water background and everything, but.
So I didn't, I didn't vote for this one, but I like this one because of the movement.
I wish it had more color though.
It wasn't colorful enough.
I like the colors. And I like the top. It's like, I love the way the top looks like the bottom of a unicorn.
Unicorn. I don't really like that one, because it's too masculine. It's, I mean, it's made to look like a comic book, but it, it just seems very masculine. I actually didn't think that.
So I, I was the one who actually chose that one. I think it's pretty immersive. And as you walk in, the water above and the water beside. And there's two women, one man. Um, but they're all muscular. And I think that really talks to why you're entering the facility. And there's yoga there. So I, I was just kind of drawn to it. I mean, that was my first gut reaction. That one spoke to me. The others, a little less so. So I just wanted to share that.
I'm in this. That's the problem, right? Like, uh, when we have no theme attached to it, then they just used it to their creative uses, you know, like to do that. And like the one in Shiloh, you know, we are attracted to that because of the history they're bringing in. And, but I agree with Vicki. I think this one, you know, looking at the population and M A F C, the foot traffic, it'll just be more welcoming to the community. Um, is my gut. Yeah, like if that's not, I like this one too. But if, if the theme was, you know, water and M A F C kind of a thing.
The only thing about this one is, like, I see this one as more like a, more like a drawing, more like a cartoon. Like honestly, I'd love to put something like this in a playground, but to, but for a place where mostly, I feel like it's gonna be adults going in and out. And I just, I just responded to that one more on that level.
And, and, and mine, like, you know, if you're walking into M A F C, you don't need a word M A F C there.
Yeah, it already says it.
I mean, that one only got one vote. I don't think we're in any danger.
Yeah, I'm in this.
It's gonna take a lot to sway. I think we're, I think we're, we're between these two.
Yeah.
All right. Very good. This has been a great discussion. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and hand you all your blue dots. And now that you've had a chance to listen to each other and your justification for your initial choices, hopefully that will help you as you make your second choices. And what we want to make sure, um, I hope for this one is that you will, um, see if you've had a chance to sway one another. And if so, for the next meeting, that we'll have that final selection. So, um, I will go ahead and hand out.
So are you, are you saying that, uh, you'll give us one more again, uh, on twenty-seventh?
Uh, no, on the twenty-seventh, you all will make your final selection for each other.
So then by asking us to put it, you're pretty much cornering us to do it. So then there's nothing left for twenty-seventh.
We can still talk to each other.
We can talk to each other. I mean to say, like, but we can do that on twenty-seventh.
This is not the final, final. Is that what you're worried about?
Yes. This is semi-final. And also, um, if there is something like in that location for that one where you all said we wanted to say Morseville, that gives me an opportunity between this meeting and the next to reach out to the artists and see if that's possible.
I don't know what she thinks. We've been listening to each other.
Yes. So one dot per location. Now that we've had a chance to confirm.
I'm confident of this vote.
Yeah, I don't think I'm coming off of this one.
Oh, my God. It's not me.
God.
God, what a snitch.
Now it's upside down.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, why don't we just put that to the side?
Be careful, okay? Be careful.
These are the windows.
Yeah, because of that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, that one's going there.
The deciding one again.
It's gonna be.
Amy, meeny, miny, mo, catch a tiger by his.
What'd you do over there, though?
We should add a.
Good point.
Just saying.
What if they made it, made the person brown?
Well, then I put my dog right over there.
Tell me, tell me why you don't like that lady on the end.
What if, because it's a white person.
Is it? But so, that could be a white person.
No. But it's like the one person that's like fully formed.
So I think she has on stockings. Oh, you're right. That is light.
Well, that's a part of discussion. Can we make this person more racially ambiguous?
More racially ambiguous. Yeah, if we do. By the way, my dog goes over there. I'm not happy with that.
It's a burnt sipsy color.
It's not a burnt sipsy color. It's the same freaking color as me.
Oh, no, honey.
I'm a lot lighter than that.
I'm very light.
Okay, it's the same color as me.
All right. So, um, we will start back on fire admin, I'm sorry, for, um, Shiloh. And, um, we've had some discussion here. So it looks like we are now four to three. And we have heard that, um, one of the things that would keep some council members from selecting this location would be that this person isn't as racially ambiguous as they would like. So that is something that I will reach out to the artists and see if they are open to making that particular change. And I'll make that, um, that call between this meeting and the next. And that way, hopefully, on the next meeting, that will make you all a little more comfortable about selecting whichever one is best for you all. But yes, all right.
Could I, could I also request that the idea, some people didn't like this as much because they didn't see the story. Will each of these, like, have a plaque of the artist's name and, like, a little, two sentences contain, explain from left to right?
Explanation?
I still like this one better.
Is that something we could consider?
It's something that we can consider.
Okay, thank you.
I like that. No one sits back, no one stops and like reads those plaques.
Fire administration, um, it's, you know, so we are good on that one. So no need to, you know, worry yourself about that particular location.
Get Morseville on that one.
Is this the final decision or we still have time?
Yeah, I know. But I mean, it looks like everyone's made up their.
All right. And so for our final location, we have now a vote of four to three.
No, it's five.
Oh, five, five. Yeah, five to two, sorry. So, um, it looks like most people are open to. Were there any changes that you would like made to one of these that would make it, um, where you're willing to kind of change your vote from this one to that one if majority is here? No change. Okay.
I don't know that, I don't know that we need the, I mean, it's not like it has to be unanimous either.
It doesn't. Yeah. So I think for this one, then this is our final selection. So we have two out of three. This is great. This is great.
Still, just give us those next two. And in two weeks, we can finish up. I don't want to be disrespectful of those two people. I mean, we're good on that one. We all agree. Does that make sense to everybody?
I like that, since I'm one of the two.
Same.
All right, sounds good. And so for this one, we'll look at adding the word Morseville. And then for that one, we're gonna address the, um, the ethnicity of the person on the last facade. And for this one, we're gonna leave it open so that we can have those final thoughts and hopefully have.
Good wrap-up. Good. This was fun.
Great job. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Brittany. Fun, fun.
I love a real truth.
We have to go around and around before.
I mean, you know.
It's all good.
All right. Okay, good. We're done with that. What else? That was really, Brittany, that was really good. And you did a really good job facilitating it too.
We have one more work session to go through.
Brittany is a rock star. Man, look at this, look at all this artwork. Wow. How come she didn't submit a mural?
Good question. Why didn't you submit a mural? So Brittany is officially my favorite person, even before, even before she did a fantastic job with all of this.
That's fabulous.
This is inside the building at P S M S. It's on a wall right outside a conference room.
That really is fabulous.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, really. We can fund that.
Thank you, Brittany.
Okay.
Town manager Zudma will facilitate this last of our work sessions for this evening.
Well, good evening again. Do not plan to take a long time with this. Really, um, our intent from our side, again, happy to hear what your thoughts are. I'm not gonna read this entire document to you. It's posted in the packet. It's available to the public online. Um, my thought was to go through and really share what our staff takeaways and further discussion points were to make sure we're on the same page, that we didn't miss anything that you think is important as we prepare to come back to you. So again, our next step after tonight, after this debrief, is with the, that we would come back to you the twenty-ninth. There'll be two work sessions that night. The first will be the Chamber of Commerce, um, for Economic Development Discussion. And then it'll be a budget work session. Um, so what we'll be coming back with is first, some discussion about some of the items we didn't get to at the retreat. And then we'll potentially, I think, Jeannie will be ready with some additional reveal, um, concepts around how, how it's gonna impact different people in the community and begin to share that with you as, as a precursor to other decisions down the line. So with that, um, I will start with solid waste. Um, we had a discussion regards timing on the potential implementation of a solid waste fee. Uh, and we took away that council is open to, um, considering an FY twenty-six implementation, particularly related to the fact that our solid waste contract is up and that we would be doing a fee potentially that would align with a new contract and also the opportunity for some new options for residents to take advantage of related to solid waste and recycling. Any, anyone feel other than that, I guess, is the question? Okay? So, um, option two, you had a brainstorming and council communication session. Um, I thought that that went, you know, very well. You shared with each other. And we'll be summarizing that. We have a document to share with you of what came out of that conversation is how, how to best reach each other, when to best reach each other. And some of that information, we'll share that with you once we get it formatted up. Okay? Uh, third, the advisory committees. Um, so you took action tonight, I think that affirms what we took away in regard. we took away in regards to the MP Act and PMAC committees. So that was addressed tonight. And again, we also had the opportunity to recognize some of those members. We'll be reaching out to the other members to thank them as well. We'll be coming back to you with a proposed alternative for parking ticket appeals. So we had some discussion around the Public Safety Advisory Committee and some recommendations to handle that differently. So we'll come back to you with that. We also had some conversation about PSAC and making sure that Public Works was involved, which they are. And then we'll be coming back to you with an update on how those meetings will be managed in terms of which department and how, going forward as well. We had some conversation in regards to the Smart Cities Steering Committee and some requests from them on the potential for handling things differently. We don't really have the legal ability to allow them to do that within the functioning of the committee, but there was some discussion of the possible use of subcommittees. And so we're going to circle back with the committee and give them some options in that regard, work with our staff on that committee as well, to see if that's something that could meet their needs and still meet the, the basic operation of an advisory committee. So we'll come back to you with that as well. Any questions or thoughts there? Okay. We also talked about making sure that committee meeting minutes are being provided to council. And we'll also make sure that we are focused going forward, particularly as we get our permanent Newtown clerk in place, focusing on new committee member training, new committee chair and vice chair training, and also making sure our staff liaisons are up to speed as well. So we'll be working on that going forward. And then finally, with the committees, we'll coordinate an annual joint meeting between the council and each of the five remaining advisory committees going forward. We heard pretty strong consensus around that. Hearing nothing, I'll move to economic development.
If I could just.
Yes, sir.
I thought one thing that was partially discussed was the concept of recording some of the meetings.
Yes.
There is the idea of some of them might have to go to a different site or something. But that was something I recall.
Yes, we will look into that as well. Thank you for adding that as a reminder.
Anything else?
Okay. Economic development, we had some good discussion. We had a review of some of what our consultant, Kathleen Henry, had suggested to you in the past. I missed, had her name wrong there. I apologize. We also provided some information and feedback regarding recent conversations with the Morrisville Chamber of Commerce and what their role perhaps could or should be moving forward as the town arrives to become potentially more proactive. So you asked for us to invite them to a meeting and they will be there February 29th to have that discussion. Again, I'll follow up with an email, but if you have thoughts on any particular questions you would like to talk with them about, any particular topics you would like to talk to them about, that would be the opportunity to do that in that work session. So please let me know what your thoughts are in that regard, so we can make that a good meeting for everyone.
Would we be allowed during that meeting to ask them about, are they going to be prepared to present like the, how the money that they get from us is being used?
Like, kind of, you asked me to share that with them, absolutely.
And then what they, and then I'd like, I'd like to see that and like to see what their plan is with their budget. Like, I mean, I just want to know how they're using the money and if we gave them the money again, what they would do with it.
Okay.
There we go. The money that we provide the chamber. But we've been, we were told at the retreat that they were asking for more money. And I want to know what. Yeah. Where, what is their plan?
The ask for more money, I think, was more a general comment as opposed to a specific request. However, again, we are, we do have an agreement with them for economic development where we are providing them approximately $50,000 a year. We are also doing some in-kind trade of, give or take, about $10,000 a year. And then we are also renting space upstairs in Jeannie's treehouse for the budget team as well. And we're contributing $24,000. So, you know, when you do that, we're around $85,000 that we provide to the chamber annually.
Okay, but to Steve's point, if their position is that they would like more money, I mean, without something on paper about plans to spend it, I mean, I.
Sure, no, I understand.
You know.
Yeah, we'll ask them for that.
Yeah, I mean, I'll go back and look at the slides that they presented, but I just want to make sure that the expectation going at the meeting is I really want to get into specifics about what their plan is over the next six months to a year. Because if we're going to give them money, existing money, where is that money going in their plans? And any additional money, where would that money be going? That's my expectation. Because we've been talking about this for a long time and I'm really at a point where I want to make a decision. And so I'm going to need some of those two things.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll send you more questions.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll frame that up for them. Again, I'll, I'll send you an email soon, but if we could get that maybe this week, I think that would be fair to give them some time to put that together for you.
I had just one thought. Like Cary seems to have a very well-functioning chamber. They came out of COVID okay, maybe Apex too. Like, this is more of almost a staff, ask a staff. How, how are they formatted and structured in such a way that they are more successful than we are right now? I don't know if that's even possible to get our mind around.
I mean, they're definitely both large organizations. I, I believe they both have some funding from the municipality. I, I can't begin to tell you what that looks like or how that's used. I think we could research that or you could ask the chamber to bring that information.
Okay, like maybe a per capita spend or something to compare apples and oranges is $85,000 reasonable, given the size of our town compared to what does Cary contribute, what does Apex contribute? Just to get a level playing field, so we know, so we're a little bit more informed going into that would be helpful.
Yeah. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, if we're going to. So I, I think for me, that would not be apples-to-apples comparison. I would need to understand what they're all getting for that. I mean, there, there might be a lot more. So I'm, I'm not sure that's helpful.
Yeah.
To me personally.
I, I agree. I think if you're looking only from the town point of view, that is one data point. But Cary Chamber may have 10,000 people who are signed up versus 1,000 people in Morrisville. So that revenue is also a different stream, you know, then they can have more employees from the Chamber point if it isn't Cary compared to one or two staff. I think that's what we know, right, as of now. So those all play a lot into how big the Chamber is and how deep their pockets are, not just from the town point of view. It's also for how much they are outworked and how much they are getting. You know, we saw a revenue decline from, when Sarah was there, right, you were talking compared to what it is pre-COVID, post-COVID. So what was a contributing factor that they did not recover compared to the others? So, and I, I don't think it's our job to get into all those things. It is basically asking them, you know, how are they successful? I would put, instead of our staff, I would put it back on the chambers. You give us the story of how, what did they do?
I would agree with that. To understand their history is, would be more valuable to me and, and how we got here, because we weren't always here. So how did we get here? Whatever they can share to that extent, you know. Well, I'll give you one of mine right now. I said it at the retreat. I want to know how many members are actually Morrisville businesses.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. I mean, I, I think that's a good question.
And the trend there would be important, too, because that trend should be going up. And so I would like to know the history of that.
And the way, yeah, and the way I look at making business investments, just like in my career, you know, coming from a sales background is, you know, not only where the customer, where the breakdown of the customers are, but if we're going to give you a certain amount of money, you know, what is your strategy of acquiring new customers, new members? I mean, I think that's a perfectly legitimate.
We don't need to give you an email.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 we're all doing.
We're listening.
This meeting is live recorded. I want to make sure I'm getting this after the public so that people on the chamber can hear this. That's why, because I want to set the expectation now, you know, if they're listening.
But also, and what are the trend lines? You know, how, how many small businesses, the number of small businesses going up, is the number of larger mid-sized businesses going up? What are the big corporate clients? You know, what are the, what are the trend lines in membership? And then honestly, what are we doing to keep each of those, each of those business types in the chamber? They, they need very different things and they're, they're interested in very different things, like what's, you know, like kind of like what's our plan for, for each type of business? I mean, this should be stuff that, this should be stuff that already exists, frankly. I mean, yeah.
And I'm, I'm not sure that I've ever seen it, or not recently, that's for sure.
So maybe you can resend their strategic plan that they finished back out to us in advance of this.
That's what I was trying to say.
See if I have it.
That would help in the conversation.
Anything else, sir?
Okay, moving on. Cricket, so we just really gave you some updated information on the '23 season, what we see coming in the '24 season. Do not have any particular updates right now. We're still working on gathering additional information on, you know, where we're going to be this year with TCL, with ACE, with minor and major league. We're having some conversations with a couple other groups that are interested if we can fit them, so trying to maximize the use of that field, but still have some information to gather. So we'll come back to you, I think, when we have something more to share with you, quite honestly. All right, affordable housing. So Michelle gave sort of a refresher on, you know, how we got into where we are in terms of affordable housing, provided some new additional data related to area median income, median household income in, in Morrisville and across the region. You discussed down payment assistance and got a reminder on what the anticipated cost with that program would be, and also got a bit of an update from Habitat, although really that answer is in part that we're still waiting for information from them, Michelle. Okay. So we're, we're, we're working with them, but we want to make sure we clarify that before we bring anything to you. And then the takeaways that we had was that, again, staff will be returning as soon as they have, I think, reliable information that we can intelligently explain to you from Habitat. We paused any work on down payment assistance outside of the Habitat option. That could be considered if that came back and that's what they're saying they need. Direction to not right now consider a Wake County construction partnership, cost prohibitive right now. And that we will seek direction from you as a part of the budget process as to what might or might not be included in an FY25 recommendation. And then I think the last thing we did hear from a couple of people, some interest in following up again on rental assistance. So would like to get a feel for if that's something you want staff to bring back or not. Councilmember Garamal, yes?
Yes. Me, no.
Yes, I'm, I'm seeing at least four, one, two, three, four head nods. So we'll, we'll bring back rental assistance info. Okay. Any other thing, anything else, I'm sorry, on affordable housing? Okay. You had a brainstorming session on Sunday. Again, thank you, thank you for that, but really, I think, I think for publicly, thank you for all of the work that went on in this retreat. It was very helpful to us, gave us some good direction to help bring you back, I think, a logical budget recommendation. And thank all of you. I've met with all of you individually the last five or six days. And again, had an opportunity to pick your brains a little bit and see where everybody's at. No, no commitments, of course, but a good, a good bit of feedback as to what we might be focusing on going forward. So the takeaways from that is that really we're going to utilize what you provided us in terms of information. We felt that you had some consensus around further discussing economic development, supporting future investment, interest in supporting sustainability and technology and innovation. And then you also discussed some themes related to competitive compensation for our staff, focusing on connectivity, diversity, facilities, parks, roads, land acquisition, multimodal transportation, and transparency. Is what we took from the brainstorming session. And again, you'll, you'll see a lot of that when we come back with recommendations. We then got into the budget. So staff provided some overview of where we are in terms of revaluation and what that could look like for different components. You know, our, the, our overall value increase is approximately 45% across the town, residential's closer to 55, commercial at about 37%, and land value increase approximately 58%. We sort of led through a discussion regarding funding priorities, potential willingness. And we took away that there was consensus to further consider not going revenue neutral, not a commitment beyond that, but a willingness to discuss what a rate above revenue neutral might be. We shared with you some fund balance information and where we are today versus where the policy is. And then we also shared some CIP information, what our debt capacity, our affordability looks like, what our challenges are because of increasing costs in terms of making sure that we're trying to stay within your own financial policies, particularly related to debt and other things that could impact credit ratings. So we want to make sure that we're on top of that. We discussed the Town Center project, the Public Works facility, and the Crabtree Creek Nature Park. And also discussed a variety of planned but unfunded projects. And we briefly spoke about some potential new revenue opportunities for '25. Our takeaways from that budget conversation is that, again, further discussion of potentially going above revenue neutral, interest in specific areas for potential funding such as existing staff support, suspending any current work on the Sea Crabtree Creek Nature Park project and reassigning some of those ARPA funds to Town Center. And you saw some of that tonight when you approved the amendment to the pre-development agreement. Adding additional funding to the CIP to maintain the viability of what you've already programmed. And then adding additional funding potentially for land acquisition. You agreed to, to withdraw our acceptance of the Parks and Rec Trust Fund or the Part of Grant for CCNP, ensuring that any use of property tax revenues above revenue neutral would be clearly aligned with what the benefit would be to the community. Heard that very clearly. Our staff has heard that very clearly. So you'll see that when we come back to you.
Which page are you on?
I'm at the bottom of page five.
Could you add to this something we talked, you and I talked about Friday, about corporate sponsorships as a potential?
Revenue source.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That's something that's sort of been on the plate for a while.
Yeah, we're, we're working through. We have a draft that, as we look at it, I think we still have some information to add to that, but we're working on that. We're also reaching out to Greater Raleigh Convention and Visitors Bureau and the Greater Raleigh Sports Authority for some guidance on, you know, what, what sponsorship levels might they use in different situations. Because we can come up with, I think, a very solid policy, but I don't know if a sign at the baseball field is worth 100 bucks or 1,000 bucks or $10,000. And so we're going to get some support and assistance on that. And then we're, we're also going to bring to you some options for not only what might be permissible, what's not permissible, who, who might we partner with, who might we not partner with, but also some criteria if you were to get to the point where you open it up and three people say we want to sponsor that. I mean, is it as simple as a bidding war? I don't think so, but some criteria of how do we further evaluate who's willing to do that? So we've, we've got some work still to do, but that is absolutely on our list to bring back.
And I was thinking about it with regards to Crabtree Nature Park. We still want to do that, but it's become a lower priority.
Yes, not, not, not gone at all.
We need revenue.
Pause, yes. I think one of the last things, well, a couple of things left on takeaways from budget conversation, leaving the fund balance, fund balance policy as it is, minimum of 25% and a goal of 45%. And then, so what we will be seeking further feedback and discussion of, not tonight per se, but alignment of tax revenue above revenue neutral with specific projects, programs, or initiatives. So I've heard some of that in our individual conversations over the last week, so we'll be using that information. The value of adding additional resources to address current and future needs, how to proceed with affordable housing and economic development. We'll need additional guidance from you on both of those. We have some information to bring to you. You're going to have a conversation with the chamber, but then ultimately we'll need guidance as we start to prepare the budget of what is going to get funded or not funded and to what extent. Because as you all know from our individual conversations, the pennies can add up pretty quickly. So we want to make sure we're prioritizing and, and getting consensus on how we go forward with that. That is what I had on the budget discussion. Any questions or any highlights that you didn't feel I addressed? Correct. Yep. Okay. So wanted, wanted to touch base. There were, the one thing we didn't really get to was the other budget topics. So we had four that had been presented by different council members, participatory budgeting, space needs, sustainability, and transportation. I've talked to each of you about those. The consensus that I heard individually was that three of the four would, would want more discussion, those being space needs, sustainability, and transportation. Want to confirm that before we start preparing conversation for the 29th.
Head nods.
Okay. Head nods.
Could you break down transportation on the local product?
Sure. Yep, so Councilmember Johnson and I discussed that. I think her primary focus there is to discuss pedestrian safety, but also perhaps an update on what we're doing with intersection improvements and other things that are coming out of some different sources, bond money, or you've got, again, a transportation reserve. So we'll, we'll talk about that and provide some updates on that. I think sustainability, what I've primarily heard is just doing what we're doing, but expediting it. You know, if it's, we have a sustainability master plan that is funded right now, for the most part, where we would work through that. I think there is interest in, you know, if it was planned for '26, let's talk about getting it done in '25, and '27, and '26, and so on, and, and creating a little more flexibility, perhaps, and what it would look like in terms of staff need to do some of that, because, you know, Kimberly's probably at or near full workload. All right, so I think that's what we have for right now. Any other particular topics that you want discussed when we come back the 29th? Keeping in mind, we anticipate having about 90 minutes, and you've got three topics so far.
I think again, the work groups that were formed with the staff to talk about personnel issues. I feel like...
Personal policy?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's coming back to you at a future meeting. I think we have that in March right now. Yeah, so we have, we have a draft of that complete. So again, we'll bring you some of the recommendations that staff has, senior management has some additional recommendations to include in that, and the ones we bring you right now would be just updates to policy, no funding attached to it. There'll be a few other smaller items that we will bring as part of a budget request to highlight some small opportunities to, to do some things for staff.
I think primarily we talked about removing OPI.
Yes.
That is pretty clear.
Yeah, we'll certainly have an update for you on where we are with, with parks payment and lieu funds.
How much do you get for apartment?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
That is pretty clear.
Correct, yes. So we, I got that from a couple of you in terms of, the term escapes me, the per apartment cost when they, when they build.
Oh, the, like the fee that's associated per unit.
The development fee per unit, correct, yeah. So we'll, we'll bring you back some information on that. Any other questions about any of that?
Yes, also, but what a land acquisition fund would look like and how that could...
Yeah, we've got that on our list. We may be able to discuss that the 29th, if not, we'll certainly bring it back at another. What we'll do is, is take the information we have about where we are with projects today that have already been, you know, adopted in the CIP. Jeannie and Byron will work with Davenport, our advisors, to plug in some numbers and help us look at, you know, what would a penny look like? Perhaps if you added that, would that stabilize us? Would that help us to stay within our own policies? Would that, could that let us expedite any future projects? We'll bring you a variety of answers there that you can look at and, and see what that looks like. Thank you. Okay, to quickly wrap up, parking lot items, and so here, Mayor's, actually, here's where we had that advisory committee meeting item for looking at audio versus audio and video for the committees, virtual committee meetings. We're also looking at career development and developing, you know, succession planning. We're also in early conversations about an internal leadership academy for the town that would be open to all of our staff to participate in, that would likely be in part classes taught by our staff, but it would also be potentially bringing in like some guest lectures at a time. It would also potentially involve some UNC School of Government classes that we would bring here. Again, we're, we're, we're early, early, early. We've got a lot of great ideas, but it's all sitting up in our heads right now, so we'll be coming back to you on terms of what that might look like for the next year and beyond. Our parking lot also, again, reminded us to look at greenway and pedestrian connectivity gaps, and then we've already talked about the town sponsorship policy. And then, council had a parking lot, so council had, talking about council liaison to committees. So if you have not done that, I would encourage you to do so, you know, potentially offline, or we could certainly hold time in a meeting if you were to so direct us. Roundtable, submittal, portal, Giselle, actually, today sent me a new form that I think will be more user-friendly, won't cut off lines, will let you say what you would like to say about all of your items. And then again, when we meet in March, April, roundtable?
There is a meeting that's coming up.
Oh, roundtable's coming up. So we'll, we'll have that for you sooner than I thought. And one of the things we want to talk about during the roundtable is the roundtable, and how it's working for you, how it's working for staff, what do we want to look at with that, and, and make sure that we're, we're making it useful, but not also creating lists of things that might not realistically be gotten to and things like that. So I think we just want to talk through that with you. That is primarily what we have for council, and then we've got a list of budget FAQs there that I'm not going to bother reading to you, but again, we'll, we'll have a first draft, I think, of FAQs by the 29th at the work session to share with you, and then obviously, as we have in other years, that'll just build as we discuss things over time. That is what I have for you from the debrief, and I think gives, you know, our residents and others viewing the meeting a pretty good idea of what was discussed and what some of the outcomes were. I'm not sure who was first.
His has been up the whole time. So, sort of roundtable-ish, I think the term was an idea wall that we talked about at the retreat, like a place to just sort of throw up ideas, because if they're doing the roundtable only two or three months, if there's a place that we can sort of, if you had a thought, just put it up on the wall, and people can react to it, or just hear it in an easy way, so I don't have to call each person individually and things like that. I mean, ideas come to all of us at different times, and just having a place to park them, it's like a parking lot that's ongoing. It's just a thought. Something like that.
Technological, or you talked about...
Whatever works.
So if you're talking about electronic board, we have to be very careful that it is public-facing, because anytime seven of us kind of build upon suggestions or ideas that others have, that's considered a public meeting potentially. And I, and I'm, if you want to have an electronic space that's on the website, people can look at it and see what we're, you know, coming up with, I think Frank might want to weigh in on that as well, but it, it's a potential to be considered a public meeting.
He's giving me the nod that, yes, if you were to do something like that, it would certainly need to be public-facing. Don't believe it needs to get public comment, but it would at least let, in the interest of transparency, the public see what you're talking about. And I think there's, there's definitely some merit to that, and that might, you know, better balance some of what goes into the roundtable versus what are just ideas to, to bounce off.
Thank you.
Anything else? Last thing I have for you is that we have shared with you previously that we're going to start monthly department presentations, rather than stack them up for speed dating, we're going to let them just have some time in a meeting, and we'll get one a month, and perhaps we might do two a month if it's really relevant to like budget, to get them done sooner than that, if it's useful, but generally, we're talking about one a month. I think we're envisioning 30 minutes, 10 to 15-minute presentation, 15 to 20-minute conversation with the department head, and they may have some of their staff there. So we have some ideas about what we think that might look like, but we're also interested in what your ideas might be of, what would you like to hear, what would be useful for you, what would be beneficial to you when these departments come before you that would make that useful time? So if you have ideas now, happy to hear those, if not, I'll include that in the, I need some information from you email that I will send out this week to get to you.
So I'd be interested, over time, like what were the things that their stretch, their stretch asks that didn't make it into the budget? Because it's your job to give us a balanced budget, but I'd be interested in knowing what things they were hoping to accomplish, what they could try to do, and I know that puts you in a slightly awkward spot, but I mean, that's just something that, what are their hopes and dreams into the future?
So I think I'm, I'm open to them sharing you, you know, what they might expand into or try to do in the future. Respectfully, I don't think them sharing with you what they asked me for and didn't get because it didn't get to you is appropriate.
Yeah, fair enough.
I think that, that can look a lot like sidestepping us to get to you, and I don't want to put you in that position, and I don't want to put them in that position. I want them, you know, because I'm, I'm working very hard with our department head so that we have a very consistent manner of how we communicate, how you communicate with them, how we make sure everybody's hearing the same information. So I, I think that we can certainly encourage them to share what's on the horizon for their department, without it being, well, we asked for this, but we didn't get it, so we're not doing it.
Understood.
Very different.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Accomplishments, I don't know, I'll, I'll think about it, but I'll get, if you ask us, I'll think about it in an email, but I was going to say accomplishments, what they've accomplished. We need to, we need to celebrate what we accomplished in this town, and we, we forget to, not that we don't forget to do, we get too busy. We're like, that's done, we did it, let's move on, we got to do the next thing, and I think we need to celebrate accomplishments, and these departments are doing phenomenal work.
And I would like to see something like a five minutes, like, you know, true stories, like, you know, from a fire department or a police department, or like testimonials, you know, like, because I just feel more energized when I hear those kind of stories. It's not always, you know, that's when I, I want to be more personal, like, public works. Every department, like, you know, like, ener, like, you know, engineering or planning, you know, those kind of things.
Yeah, the departments we don't see a lot. Sorry, Michelle, we see planning all the time. We never, we never see...
Yeah, like what are the outcomes?
Exactly.
I mean, we're not budgeting staff, we're not budgeting programs, we're budgeting outcomes. Like what, how has it helped our residents? How are our residents benefiting?
I mean, won't it be similar to some of the items that make it into the news and notes? I mean, those are some of the accomplishments.
I think it could be. I think it depends on the timing of when that department comes, and so we'll, you know, we'll try not to be redundant, but don't want to not put it into news and notes.
Right.
Because again, all of our staff now see that, a lot of people see that for information. On the, the accomplishments, I will share with you that one of the things that we've started doing when our department head group meets monthly is we go around the room, and everybody has the opportunity to commend another employee or two, or sometimes more, that they've just noticed doing really good work the last month. And then I'm going to be summarizing those and sharing it with our staff, and I'll share that with you as well, is, hey, look at who got, you know, who got commended in the department head meeting this month. All right, so certainly you can send us other ideas, just wanted to throw that out there. Again, we'll, we'll ask you all these questions again in an email soon. Anything else that you would like to discuss regards to any of this tonight?
There's a council academy that might have been happening, is that still on the horizon? Police, fire?
Yes, I believe they, have they not reached out on that? I think we have dates set for that. I thought we reached out with dates, but let me get that out.
I don't want to see anything on my calendar.
I, I want to say it is April 6th and 20th, because those were two weekends that seemed to work for everybody. We were trying to avoid the 13th, particularly because fire, well, both of them would be tied up that day, but to some extent in that Battle of the Badges tournament in Holly Springs. But I believe it's April 6th and April 20th, but I will confirm that.
I can use a reminder, obviously. Thank you.
So be a community safe, or a public safety academy for council, so you would spend one Saturday with police and one Saturday with fire.
Yeah, I can tell you there's nothing on our calendar right now.
Nobody's driving fast in a police car.
Oh, good.
Negative. Okay. That, that is what I have for you, thank you.
Good.
Anything for the good, anything for the good of the order, anybody? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Councilmember Johnson, second from Councilmember Fender. All those who favor adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That carries unanimously, please, 9:08, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
You heard that, right? 9:08.